Let's move now to the homelessness issues, 184 and 185. I think the thing to do here on these is to stay on the dais and let's lay out what 184 is, let's lay out what 185 is, let's let council members lay out what the amendments are, not at length, but just briefly enough to let the members of the public know the amendments that are going to be put in play. And then we'll turn to what will be a significant conversation. We have a little over 200 citizens signed up to speak. By our rules, the first 20, basically, more or less, 10 on yes and 10 no, 20 total, will speak for three minutes. And then after those first 20 or so, it'll be one minute each. We have a couple of people that have signed up in the first 20 as being neutral, so I'll probably call two or three of those so that they get to speak as well, three minutes. So I might actually call 23 people in that regard. But let's do that, let's lay out 184 and 185. 184, because we're going to call the speakers at the same time on both of those. 184 was a motion I brought, real appreciative of the sponsors that joined. Quite frankly, given the nature of what 184 is, this really could have been authored by anybody on the council, because it really just sought to capture what everybody was saying on the dais. There is another item, the 185, that speaks to our no sit, no lie camping ordinances. But this is kind of the companion to that, that says that if we act in that regard, that we're also going to not only address, we're going to also address where people not just can't camp or sit or lie, but take a look at where we can. The resolution sets up immediate action, manager and the new strategy officer coming immediately back to council in August to lay out consideration of ideas such as proposing reasonable time and place opportunities and limitations on camping, sitting, and lying. It also asks staff to come back with noncriminal remedies or tools related to time and place limitations on camping, sitting, and lying. Maybe there are things we can do similar to what we did with the sobriety center, or things that we did relative to students, kids, and curfew hours, when we did away with those, but still maintain the ability to get people to a better place than the one that they were found in. It also asks the manager to provide possible options for parking areas across the city that would allow for people to sleep in their cars. Right now, a lot of homeless, folks experiencing homelessness in our city, a lot of mothers and their children are sleeping in cars at the end of dead-end streets. Not a very safe thing to do, but to take a look at options that we might have to provide, safer places, places where there's more intervention with social service workers, so we can get people into shelters or into supportive housing and off the street. Also looking at options for storage, lockers, that kind of thing, providing for periodic updates. Goes on to talk about, also, in addition to those things back in August, also taking a look at, looking at all the plans and resolutions and the overall work that's being done in the city. So it's basically the charge of your strategy officer. And then there's a paragraph that talks about trying to identify opportunities for shelters and/or camping areas, permanent or temporary shelters, all over the city, all 10 districts, as we talked about earlier when we took the action on the 174, 5, 6, 7 issues. But then it goes on to list a lot of other things that are ideas that we would like you and your folks to take a look at, not intended to be an exhaustive list at all, but would be the kinds of things that we would want to take a look at. I guess what we're saying is, is that we have a very unique time in the city right now, where we have a community will to actually recognize this as the highest priority challenge our city has, to take a look at this and recognize that no one element of this fixes this, or helps this, or cures this, that we have to be working across a whole wide range of options, and that we've done a lot of planning, we need to act, and we're expecting things to happen now that we have an immediate challenge and need to move forward. That, generally speaking, is what 184 was intended to be. Anyone want to just daylight amendments they want to bring to 184, and then we'll turn to 185? Councilmember Kitchen, go ahead.
I passed out an amendment, and this relates to, I think it's your first Be It Resolved. As you said, the purpose of the first Be It Resolved is to analyze and recommend additional options for helping people who are living unsheltered, including the potential of that first bullet, to considering ideas to propose reasonable time and place opportunities and limitations on camping, sitting, and lying. So I have language that adds, adds a specific circumstance that I think is necessary to include in the consideration of ideas. And that goes to the testimony that we heard earlier today. We heard from a lot of people in South Austin that are particularly concerned about activities that are dangerous for others, for themselves and others, under the bridge at Manchak and Ben White. I think it's absolutely critical that we demonstrate the interest in understanding what we can do about that area. Basically, we've got to do something about what's happening with camping in that particular area. So all I'm asking is that we put language specifically here so that we can let the people know who expressed their concerns earlier in the day, and the people in those neighborhoods that I work with all the time, that we are going to have the conversation about what is going on in that area. So the language that I'm talking about, it says, including prohibiting a person camping in a public, this is for consideration, to consider, including prohibiting a person camping in a public area underneath a highway overpass that is a median or concrete barrier designed to divide motor vehicle traffic in the same or opposite directions. So the bottom line there is, what is happening in that particular area is you have folks camping on the median in between lanes of traffic on narrow medians, and that is just not, it's just not a good place for anyone to be camping. There's also, it's also next to the new transit center, so there are buses, large, big buses going right by where people are camping every 10 or 15 minutes. So I just think that that's an untenable situation, and as part of identifying safe places where people can be, we should be specific that this is not a place that's safe for people to be.
Okay. Councilmember Tovoe, I think you had also an amendment to 184?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for accepting our amendments and incorporating them in, which included identifying some of the other resolutions, but also the resolution, or the amendment that Councilmember Kitchen and I came up with, that indicated, change the language from identify places where people can sleep to being very specific, please come back with options for at least 10, one in each council district.
Excuse me.
The other?
I'm sorry, what? Do you have, I don't have your copy of your amendment. Did you pass them out?
She has this one.
I did, and for some reason, they, we had 20 copies, I'm not clear on what happened to it. But right now, I'm speaking about the amendments that we had provided to the mayor, that he incorporated within the draft he distributed today. So Councilmember Kitchen and I had worked on the passage on page four, or worked on the idea that got incorporated into page four, to have 10 locations, one in each council district. But the important piece of that, Mayor, was the, or another important piece of it, was that it was intended to have a sunset provision in a year, and that didn't get reflected in your version. So one of my amendments, I guess, unless you want to just incorporate that into yours, would be to add a sunset provision within a year. And the intent here is that, you know, I don't, I doubt any of us regard camping as an ideal housing solution. You know, these are, this is intended to be an immediate response to an immediate crisis, but not a permanent solution for the individuals who are experiencing homelessness, who are camping in these locations. And so the one-year time period is intended to really motivate us as a community to make possible a more permanent housing solution at the end of that year. Councilmember Kitchen, are you, do you want to add to that piece at all?
No, I think you-
Have I captured kind of carefully what we talked about?
I agree. I absolutely support and agree with what you're saying.
So our first amendment would be to kind of put that piece back into the mayor's. And a couple other small things, Mayor, on yours that we had a chance to talk about. And then the amendment sheet that I handed out adds a whereas clause that talks about the funding that was made available in 2013 for capital renovations at the Arch. Some of those renovations have been used, but about 200,000 roughly remains. And over the years intervening, it's been discussed that that could help fund some changes on what is not really, on the area that is outside the Arch now, but in the parking area. And so then, the second piece of that would be to, my second amendment would add a specific request that we look, that we ask the city manager to look toward climate-controlled storage lockers as well, but also to look at that first-floor space that's adjacent to the alley for potential, for storage. Right now, there are lockers, but also some of the proposals that have been considered, I'm sorry, I'm making this very long, but the basic idea is, there have been multiple conversations about using that money that was allocated to really revamp that space, to improve the lockers, to increase the storage space, but also to provide kind of a low-barrier place for people who want to be out of the sun in that area during the day, but not necessarily in the building, to spend time. So that is the substance of my second amendment. So on the page that I distributed, you see one about the money, one about storage, and then there are a couple tweaks to the mayor's, including getting back in there that sunset provision, and also just a clarifying, a couple other small points within.
Councilmember Tovoe, we're going to have probably at least two or three hours here in that period of time, if you could come up with the words on the claw, on the ten, on the deal, that would be helpful. I just didn't have a chance to do that. And I handed out two other amendments-
I think we had it in the original, so we'll just go back to the original language that we got to your office and retrieve that.
Okay. See what we can take out of that. There were some other changes that I made to that as well, so maybe we could take a look at that or talk to each other during the break. And then there were two other amendments that you and I talked about, that I've just handed out on the dais. One, as the city manager, not just to create a plan, but to build on the work earlier done, or being done by others, as well as by the city. And then I also had an amendment in response to what we heard from Citizen Communications today, where someone spoke about making use of third-party facilities. There was a quest about buildings of faith churches and the like, and I handed out an amendment that takes that idea and also asks the staff to take a look at that as well. All right, I think those were all the amendments on 184. Councilmember Kazzar, you want to address and lay out 185, and then folks can suggest amendments to that.
Thank you for buying time for me to chew.
I kept going until you stopped.
So first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and look forward to hearing your testimony. I want to thank my cosponsors, Delia and Natasha and P.O. for being on this. I know that you're all proud to be on it, but it's also not easy to have been on it, and so I appreciate that. And I, Mayor, I appreciate the amendments that you've offered last session and your steady hand as we've dealt with this. What is laid out before us are amending the three ordinances, targeting homelessness, camping, no sit, no lie, and solicitation. There have been, I'm not going to try to retread this ground too much, but there's been questions about whether or not these changes would allow dangerous behavior or unsafe behavior, or would allow blocking, unreasonable blocking of the use of public space, and the answer to each of those is no. There have been questions about whether or not these changes would allow people to be aggressive, and the answer to that is no. Existing laws already prohibit threatening and aggressive behavior. But just to add even extra clarity, we have incorporated the mayor's suggestion from the last public hearing, that further and continues to ban aggressive confrontation. So the solicitation ordinance no longer is targeting folks asking for money, people in need, but rather just banning anyone, whether they have money or not, from aggressive or threatening behavior. So this would maintain all of our protections on health and safety, it would maintain all of our protections as far as reasonable use of public space, while no longer making it a criminal act for you to sleep in your car, no longer making it a criminal act for you to ask for money at 7:30 at night, no longer creating situations where we can't point to what somebody's done wrong, but we're calling it a criminal act, and then those folks who too often have warrants because they are poor wind up in our jails. In summary, it is just one more step and one more piece of much broader work that has to be done. Obviously, things like the shelter that we moved forward on in Councilmember Kitchen's district earlier today, the shelter we cut the ribbon on just before last council meeting in East Austin, the housing bonds that Austinites passed last November, and all the work we have to do clearly are a big part of this, but I think that this is an important piece of us moving from dealing with homelessness through the jails, and instead dealing with homelessness through housing and services, while maintaining protections for health and safety for everyone, especially considering that homeless folks oftentimes are victims of violent crime, much more often than those of us who are lucky enough to be housed. So I appreciate the diligent work here moving forward. I think everyone on the dais is united in protecting people's health and safety, and trying to protect the constitutional rights of every person, because making exceptions to people's constitutional rights hurts all of us. The last thing that I'll say is, I know that there are folks that might disagree with me on this issue. I hear those disagreements, I understand them, I'll keep hearing them, but I want, no matter what happens tonight, for us to continue moving forward on that goal of addressing homelessness, because I think we all are, all united around that issue. I also posted on, had posted on the message board some direction moving forward. What I'm handing out is almost entirely identical to what was posted on the message board. Essentially, it asks, because people have questions about how this will go, for the police department to track if we make these changes tonight, how often tickets are still handed out, how often people are arrested for the new ordinances that really only focus on health and safety, and to continue to work with the stakeholders on these issues as has been promised. We want, if we make these changes, we want to see how they play out, and if they aren't working as we intended, or as community members want, we can always continue to refine that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I've handed out an amendment to 185, and I appreciate that you indicated to me that you'll take this and make it part of the base motion. Obviously, we've been going back and forth with a lot of stakeholders in the language on 185, and I appreciate that it's significantly different now than when it was originally laid out for a public comment just under a month ago, and that you were willing to take, some of the suggestions came from my office, from other people on the dais, addressing some, but certainly not all of the concerns of some of the other stakeholders that were involved in the conversation, like the Downtown Austin Alliance and the Crime Commission, recognizing they still have significant reservations that I'm sure we'll be talking about here. But the last change here that I've handed out, amendment one, amendment two, were changes requested by Chief Manley to the language relative to notice, and I appreciate that you've indicated you'll take those and make those part of the motion that you make.
Could I make sure I have a copy of one of those?
Yeah.
But yes, I think so. Oh, sorry, I thought I was stealing pages. But yes, but the, yes, but yes, we'll incorporate this as base motion.
Sounds good.
Are there other amendments, just so that when people testify, they know?
No, no, that's, any other amendments to 185? Councilmember Kitchen?
Potentially. The amendment that I laid out for 184 relating to the area under the highway overpass that is a median or a concrete barrier, where the motor vehicle traffic is going in both directions, I've proposed it for 184, but if council doesn't feel it's appropriate in that one, then I will ask for it to be considered in 185.
Okay. Any other changes to lay out before we go to public speakers? Yes, Councilmember Alter?
I'm going to want to hear from the chief, I can wait till after speakers, but I think we should hear from the police chief at some point tonight.
We absolutely will. I thought we'd go to the public, and then he might be able to respond to questions or concerns, or things that we've identified, potentially, after we've heard from the public speakers.
That's fine, I just didn't want us to get to the end of the speakers and have anyone upset when I wanted to hear.
No, that's okay. And the chief said he's in here for the long haul, so he's with us, helped guide us through. All right, with that then, then let's start listening to speakers on 184 and 185. Let's begin first with Pete Winstead. Alvin, is Mr. Winstead here, Pete here?
Alvin Sanderson.
I'm sorry?
Alvin Sanderson.
No, 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 Pete Winstead. Is Pete Winstead here? Okay, what about Corby Jastro? Is Mr. Jastro here? I also want to make sure, I think we're at capacity in the building again, hall again, if there's anybody who hears their name called to speak, make sure that you work your way into here, we'll get you into the room. I want to make sure that no one who is here outside that signed up to speak does not have the opportunity to be able to speak. What about Alvin Sanderson? Is Kimberly Levinson here? You'll be on deck if you want to come to the other podium.
Thank you, Mayor Adler, and distinguished council members for listening to me. I spoke with you about a year ago over this, and I lived in the life experiences of being homeless. I'm 64 years old, and it's hard for me because of my health, because getting in that sun and walking and all that, it takes a lot to get around. For a number of years, I've worked at a food pantry, I pass out food, and I'm thankful that I can do that for the people that don't have food. Even though I'm homeless, it's not about me. I almost died because I was hiding during a, I got a camping ticket, and I hid because the police officer told me to hide. Well, there's a lot of people out there that hides, and they get themselves in situations that cause them to die. There's people that died behind these ordinances. One of them is named Suzie. Suzie's a 50-ish older woman, she has a, she has a young daughter, and she was living in the Willis, the Gillis Park area. She was living in a tunnel. So Suzie, on May, May, May 5th, Suzie died because she was trying to sleep in a tunnel, and the torrential flood comes through there and took her down, took her down to West Mary. Suzie didn't have to die, she was a good person, and she surely didn't have to die because of a camping ordinance, or to hide, just to get a biological function such as sleeping. Another person that died behind that was named Sarah. Sarah, in October of last year, was brutally murdered. Her face was sliced up, and she was just trying to get in a situation to where she could sleep and feel safe. A lot of people out there want to be in the light, the light is safety. There's a lot of things that happened to homeless people out there that are never reported, a lot of people are off the grid. Whatever their reasons is, it doesn't make, it doesn't make it a reason where they had to die because of it, and it's really just a horrible thing that goes on. Another person that died, his name was Doc, he died May 8th. He was, he was taken away down the Shoal Creek and landed up into Town Lake because he was trying to bathe. He was put in a situation to where he didn't have any facilities to go take a bath, or they'd already closed. Another person is-
You want to go ahead and finish your thoughts, sir, since your time's over?
Okay, and another person was Steve May, Mike Mays, on May 3rd, he was hit by a car. All these people were up in their age, they were up in 50s, and I'm 64, and it's hard to get around, it's hard to take notice of everything that goes on to where they wind up dying behind the ordinances.
Mr. Sanderson, thank you. Thank you very much for coming down, being with us.
Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Now, my suggestion, my suggestion to the group, and kind of to bring back Councilmember Houston, we have, we have over three hours of speakers, even if they speak for one minute each, and it's going to take us, it adds half an hour, 45 minutes, to applaud after every speaker speaks. So what Ms. Houston had was kind of like jazz hands, and that enables us to move forward, but it also lets everybody give them a chance to say, I really liked what that person said, but that will enable us to keep people moving to the podium. Is Cole Kuna here? Cole Kuna, you'll be at this podium, you'll speak next, you have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Adler, I'm Kimberly Levinson, and I'm the Vice President of the Downtown Austin Neighborhood Association, and I would like to say that it's tragic, the list of names that he just read, the people who just died, from not having a safe place to camp. We agree with that completely, but we also feel that until you actually have safe places identified, we don't understand why you're changing the ordinance. It would seem to us to be a little more prudent that you would have the city manager come back with safe places identified before you change the ordinance. We, however, strongly support more permanent housing for the homeless. Ms. Kitchen, I would love to say to you that I think that's wonderful, that you're stepping out to be the first person. We totally agree that every district should have a shelter in it, and the fact that you've been willing to stand up and be the first one, my heart goes out, absolutely. I have a lot of respect for you for that, because it can't be easy. But in the meantime, I really do believe that we are going to have some very ill effects from changing ordinances before we have new ones put in their place that protect people and that make people feel safe walking around downtown Austin. There's been a number of incidents lately that have been pretty serious, and some, many of them against the homeless, which is a serious issue. I'm really concerned that we're going to see more of that, that you're going to have some of our more unsavory drunks running around Sixth Street that take some of their rage out on the homeless people. And I would, I'd really love to ask you to please make sure that you have more police to protect them. And in the meantime, I would encourage you all to do everything you can to get more money for shelters. That's all.
Thank you. Can we have Reverend Michael Floyd? Is Reverend Floyd here? No?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, if you come down to the podium, you'll be next. Go ahead, Cole.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Cole Kuno, and I am currently a sophomore studying business at the University of Texas. I wanted to start off by saying that I think y'all are doing great work here, trying to address the issue of homelessness in Austin as it is, such a prevalent issue. address the issue of homelessness in Austin as it is such a prevalent issue felt by so many. I want to say that I fully support the changes that have been made to the solicitation ordinance, but I have significant concerns regarding the proposed changes to the camping ordinance. With the current camping, camping ordinance in place, there is already a great general feeling of uneasiness and anxiety around West Campus. For example, I lived in what was called the Callaway House last year, which is catty corner to University Baptist Church, and at University Baptist Church occasionally there would be camps set up out there, and on these occasions, people would call me from Chipotle, from on-campus, which is about a five-minute walk away, to have me help walk them back to their residence. This kind of speaks to the general feeling of uneasiness that already exists, and furthermore, I think that it is important that City Manager Cronk is allowed to come back with his proposed carve-outs for where camping will still be outlawed before these ordinance changes take effect. The reason I say this is because the proposed eight-week period that would be allowed for him to come back with his areas backs, occurs during both new student orientation and the beginning of the school year. At these times, you have a very vulnerable new student population of incoming freshmen who are having to not only adapt to a new envi, urban environment, but also living on their own. Many of these students come from towns where there are, you know, more cows than people, or where they live in the suburb of a suburb, and having to adapt to this new environment while also having to live on their own, go to college classes is a huge burden placed upon them. And kind of to wrap it all up, I know this issue is incredibly nuanced and complicated, and again, I wanna express my appreciation to y'all for handling this complexity so well. With that being said, I think that it's very important that City Manager Cronk be able to come back with his suggestions before these ordinance changes have taken effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Eileen Portner here? Why don't you, Eileen Portner, why don't you come down here? Reverend?
Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Michael Floyd. I'm a leader of Austin Interfaith and a member of All Saints Episcopal Church, and I'm here on behalf of the Clergy Council of Austin Interfaith. We'd first of all like to express our appreciation to you all for your efforts to decriminalize homelessness in our city, and we believe that the changes to current law being proposed tonight are a significant first step toward appropriate and humane treatment of those who are without housing. Austin Interfaith clergy and leaders have long expressed concern about the precarious conditions faced by people experiencing homelessness and about their treatment. During the elections last fall at our accountability sessions, we called on the mayoral and city council candidates to address the negative impact of these ordinances that criminalize many of the everyday activities that people experiencing homelessness need to do to get by. Passing the proposals tonight moves us towards achieving that goal. Most of Austin Interfaith churches have ministries that both serve and are affected by folks experiencing homelessness. Reverend John Elford of University of United Methodist Church recently shared a story about Adam in a State's Monopied article. In order to avoid getting yet another ticket, Adam camped down in a creek bed out of sight, hiding. That night, he was awakened by rain and the sound of rushing water. The creek had risen incredibly fast, and Adam was barely able to scramble out of the moving waters. All of his belongings, however, were swept away. It is incidents such as these that compel us to seek concrete and tangible solutions for our neighbors without a roof over their heads, but we recognize that we need to go beyond criminalization toward a holistic and compassionate response to homelessness in Austin. Austin Interfaith looks forward to working closely with the city staff and council to encourage specific ways to ensure needed housing and support services for the most vulnerable among us. We firmly believe that every person in our community should be treated with dignity, and no family should be forced to sleep on the streets in the dangerous conditions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is Lauren Soboski here? Okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Eileen, my name is Eileen McPhillips Portner. I am the President of the Downtown Austin Neighborhood Association. I'm also a practicing psychotherapist who has spent a great deal of time working and volunteering with the homeless. Dana recently conducted a survey. Our survey of over 300 downtown residents, including many Dana members, indicated that approximately 50% of the residents listed homelessness as the most important issue affecting the quality of life downtown. Additionally, approximately over 75% of our respondents were opposed to attending, to amending the ordinances. We asked them why they were in favor or opposed, and their responses included a range of diverse concerns and perspectives with a strong focus on safety concerns. Dana believes that the real solution to chronic homelessness in Austin is to provide adequate housing and shelter and a myriad of social services to all who need them. We recognize this is a generational challenge and not a quick fix. We recognize the council's intent and action to take these steps to help our neighbors who must seek refuge outdoors and in public spaces. Nevertheless, we share the concerns of many downtown residents that the proposed amendments of longstanding ordinances enacted to protect our citizens and our public spaces have taken place without a meaningful, robust discussion involving all stakeholders who have information and intent to solve these problems. We believe the solutions to the complex problems of homelessness will require a longer period of planning and input from thought leaders, government, and business. We believe it's important that we revisit our statutes periodically and discuss and build consensus to modify them as appropriate, incorporating input and data. It's clear from the results of our survey that consensus on these ordinances has not been achieved. We urge council to preserve the dignity of all residents, help those in urgent need, improve their quality of life day to day with a focus on placing them in long-term housing, to bring the full resources and creativity of our community to bear in doing so, and to communicate repeatedly to the public the scale of this challenge and our commitment to meeting it. And I really did hear tonight how committed you are, and I'm really happy about that. We will be publishing the survey response for public review with privacy reductions. We will include a summary page from the Dana Board. The Dana Board truly appreciates the work that you've been doing and the complexity of this task. Councilmember Tovo, your office has been working on a time for us to get together to our meeting. I'm really looking forward to our meeting so that we can share our vision and commitment to work toward a vibrant, safe downtown where all residents who live here day and night can feel safe and secure exploring our lovely city, where families can feel safe. Last, last thing, where families can feel safe strolling at night, and where those in most urgent need are assured the dignity of a safe haven, a safe and secure home.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is Kim Vonzer-Mullen here? Why don't you come on down? You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. I understand that the sentiment to oppose...
Would you say your name, please?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Lauren Soboski. I understand that the sentiment to oppose item number 185 is grown out of a claim of the desire to protect one's children. Parents who send their kids to college in Austin probably come from an affluent area that does not encounter homeless people in their daily lives. It is understandable that the shock to the comfort bubble of an economically stable life is alarming. Unfamiliarity breeds fear, and fear encourages unfamiliarity. Therefore, the people who decide the homeless population is a threat, based on deleterious stereotypes, never interact with them to disprove these stereotypes. The homeless population is vilified and then ignored. I would encourage the people who are so fearful of this vulnerable population to actually strike a conversation with them instead of driving their fear. The ordinances currently in place in Austin are not only inhumane in their nature, but also enforce the idea that homeless people require policing. They perpetuate the fallacy that any homeless person is a degenerate to society. This is not the case, and I can argue it from a personal basis. My mother was homeless for a portion of her childhood. Her mother was a single mom working three jobs to support five kids, but it was not enough. A common misconception about the homeless population is that they are lazy. My grandmother worked three jobs, they were still homeless. Do you know how hard it is to obtain a job when you do not have a permanent address or reliable transportation? Those are the, some of the first questions asked. The whole system is against you. Despite these obstacles, my grandmother persevered because, unlike those in Austin, my mom and her family were not criminalized. They were able to camp, sit, lie, and solicitate. They were able to do what they had to do to survive. They did not want to, they had to. Homelessness isn't about leisure, it is about survival. My mom's family survived in this way and were able to move into someone's basement. My mom shared a room with her mom, and the five boys shared a room. I know I said earlier how my grandmother only had five children. She took in another child while still homeless despite her economic position because he had nowhere else to go. These are the people you are criminalizing, people who take in a little boy who has no one else, people who have more humanity in their little finger than the rest of us combined. My mother's story is one of success, the rare American dream. She received a college education, and I will too. If my mom's family had been criminalized like those in Austin, I don't know if I would be here today able to use my privilege to testify before you. I've been told my mom was the exception, not the reality. I've been told that most people who are homeless are alcoholics or addicts without families. I know that this is not the case, and I can also tell you that if it was, I would not care. The homeless population lives their lives criminalized and ostrized. Imagine being so disregarded by society, people don't even look at you, and then being fined for where you sleep. And I don't care, in one argument, against the homeless population is that of addiction. It should not matter if someone is an addict. That does not dismantle, that does not dismantle the humanity of a person. You should care about your humans because you too are human.
Thank you very much. Kevin Foster, is Kevin Foster available? Really, if we can do this, I promise you, I've been here before, and in another three hours, people are gonna wish we had done this. It's really, it's kind of a neat thing to feel. Is Kevin Foster in the room? Why don't you come on down? Ma'am, you have three minutes.
My name is Kim Vonzer-Mullen, and I'm an advocate for the homeless, and I work with the homeless down under the bridge. The council and some have asked the police not to arrest our homeless because they are homeless. They say we can't arrest our way out of this. I understand that. For years, we've used our prison system as a holding tank for homeless, homeless lawbreakers and the mentally ill without providing any services, an expensive revolving door which causes the homeless to go deeper into homelessness and joblessness. I learned that Rhode Island is doing just the opposite and are delivering many from the despair of homelessness, addiction, alcoholism, and mental illness. They enforce their laws and provide onsite services to those who are incarcerated and have experienced success. When someone breaks the laws, they arrest, evaluate, and treat each person according to their need. Right now, we're having to turn a blind eye to some of what our homeless are doing because they have nowhere else to sleep or nowhere else to throw their trash, they're addicts, they're mentally ill, et cetera. We need a place, an Austin compassion clinic slash jail, to offer consequences and rehabilitation. I would like to propose strict laws that would enable us to keep our beautiful city clean like no camping in the city. However, I'm proposing we must first provide legal campsites for them to go. I'm proposing the city provides some state-of-the-art campsites around the periphery of this city with showers, bathrooms, covered campsites, police presence, and perhaps even a laundromat, free bus passes to and from, special services in the winter. I would also like to propose a citywide initiative that businesses and private citizens would allow the homeless to throw any trash they gather away in their trash receptacles. We all want a clean city. Another strict law like no littering should bring a $500 fine to most citizens. The homeless may have to do some community service to clean up our city. These are the laws that I love, no camping, no littering. This is the city I love. Keep our laws the same. Be soft until we get these resources in place. I'm a teacher. I start every year out with strict rules, and then I apply grace as we move and we grow through the year. LA has relaxed their laws for the homeless, and it's not working. Never let go of good rules, but make it possible to actually follow the rules. We live in a free country, you can sit, you can speak, but camping and littering should be punished.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Can we?
Can I ask, you know, I, I think there are, there's really a diversity of opinion within the room, and I would just ask that we, that we treat each other's words with respect. I think it's really important to people's engagement with their city council and with their local government, that they feel comfortable coming down here and addressing the council, and so, you know, I would just ask that we all listen with respect, even when we don't agree.
Thank you. It's real important. It is now past 10 o'clock. Is there a motion to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock? Councilmember Flanagan makes the motion. Councilmember Ellis seconds that. Take a vote on the dais. Those in favor extending, please raise your hand. Those opposed, unanimous on the dais, but councilmember alter off. We're gonna continue on. Before Mr. Foster speaks, is Jordan Jensen here? What about Luke Richardson?
I'm here, I would like to...
I'm sorry?
I'm here, I would like to...
That's fine, thank you. Is Joel McNue here? Why don't you come on down to this other podium? Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
My name is Kevin Michael Foster. I am a former UT student and a current faculty member at the university. Among Austin's challenges are, of course, affordability and homelessness. I appreciate the work of Councilmember Kitchen, Cassar, Tovo, and, and many others on the dais to support the stabilization of our most marginalized. I applaud housing first options, the expansion of social services, and safety nets. I hope for the revision of ordinances that make it illegal to sleep, sit, lie down, or solicit while homeless. Let's historicize for a moment. It should be known that our homeless ordinances are eerily similar to our most recent policies of the past. In the 1860s, when Texas was an exceedingly violent place and dangerous place for African-Americans, Austin was less so. As a result, African-Americans migrated in and joined the population that was already here. They came seeking safety, autonomy, opportunity. This is how we got Kinchenville, Clarksville, Robertson Hill, Greggertown, Wheatsville, Raina Branch, and a dozen other freedmen communities, each with an autonomous church and school. And then we messed up. Our response to the new black presence was to express fear, build a police force, criminalize blacks, and control them. In June 1865, the mayor and city council met to deal with, quote, "The fact that a large number of Negroes turned loose by their owners are congregating in and about Austin, as also perhaps desperate white men, making it necessary to organize a police force to control, to deal with them." And how did we put our new force to use? Council immediately passed an ordinance to deal with, quote, "All able-bodied Negroes who have abandoned the service of their employers for the purpose of idleness, or who are found loitering or rambling about, or idly wandering about the streets, or other public thoroughfares." We no longer whip the idol or lease them to the lowest bidder, as ordinance called for then, but we still saddle people with debts that make escaping homelessness less likely. And we do still disproportionately target black folk. When we criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying down, we aren't policing evildoers. We are protecting the privilege of those who don't want to be bothered with the existence of the homeless. Wouldn't it be better to end homelessness instead of policing it? And simply shifting ordinance language around may not help either. When police retain discretion to subjectively label as aggressively confrontive, we haven't made things better. We've only given power to the implicit racial biases that have characterized policing for the extent of this city's history. Reject ordinances that make it a crime to live while homelessness, while homeless, leave their criminalization, jailing, and police state expansion in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is Rachel Manning here?
Yes.
Why don't you come on down to this podium? Ms. McNew, you have three minutes.
My name is Joelle McNew and I'm the president of SafeHorns and we advocate for safety on and around the UT Austin campus. And tonight, I actually have other people that have joined this event with us to give a voice for students and University of Texas alumni that care about the impact of these ordinances. And I'm asking you, Spencer Kronk, to please give us a seat at the table. It's been almost five years that we've been coming. And the important part is, is that you all agree that it will take the community, the entire community. And so, let me just talk about myself. So, as a person who's experienced homelessness myself and the impact of what that means, I grew up with a homeless father who was addicted. He had situations that happened to him that then kinda spiraled him into a position where the addiction took over and mental illness, and he died from this experience of being homeless. And with that, that impacts your family and it leaves a ripple effect. And what happens is, it also teaches you that you must be part of the community and that you must be engaged and you must learn to see the big picture. And so, I am here because part of that was, it was very important to me to have my children go to college. And so, this has been an experience for my family and for my son, who's a first-generation college student. And it was very important to me that when his classmate was murdered, that I do something. And so, I am asking you, as a citizen who cares and loves this community, who went out to Skid Row this week to understand the big picture, who walked those streets and engaged with those people to try and understand what they're doing. They have 36,000 homeless people there. And I'm so grateful for the relationships that we have created and I'm grateful that Officer Joseph has shared the experience and the reality of what you're about to do to this city without having the infrastructure. There's amazing programs for the shelter in Ann Kitchen. I beg you to please talk to them because they have amazing programs that have worked. There are things that they've done that have failed. It's incredible. There's so many things that they're doing right now that will impact the quality of life for everyone. But I need you to also, Spencer Kronk, like Cole said, when you make this decision, students are coming back to West Campus. They are coming back, they are moving into that area, and you all know the infrastructure is not safe and there needs to be improvements. And Kathy Tovo, I beg you to give the students a voice.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much. Is Cynthia Luongo here? You'll be at this other podium. Go ahead, you have three minutes. Introduce yourself, please.
I thought I had seven. There are two people who are donating to me. Am I wrong?
I have a list of speakers, the 10 were identified.
Okay.
So...
I'll try and get through this.
But tell me, but tell me who the two people are that...
I actually, I don't recall. I went up and asked the clerk who they were and she gave me names and I didn't actually know.
There are two people donating time? So, let's give you one minute for each of those. We'll treat those as one-minute speakers.
Okay.
So, that'll give you five minutes.
That's perfect. That's all I need. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Rachel Manning. I'm here with members of Undoing White Supremacy Austin. It's good to see you all tonight. As members of Undoing White Supremacy Austin, we strongly support the changes to the ordinances related to camping, solicitation, and basic human activities such as sitting in line in public spaces. However, we strongly oppose the addition of aggressive confrontation to the ordinance that deals with solicitation. These ordinances place the comfort of white and wealthy people above the survival of some of the most vulnerable members of our community. People of color disproportionately experience homelessness in Austin and black people are more than nine times, or nine times more likely to experience or to be sighted under these ordinances. They funnel people already facing the danger and homelessness of being without a home into our jails and into debt. Ordinances that make it more difficult and dangerous to be homeless are not the answer. Instead of pursuing humane solutions to reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness, we have shifted the responsibility to the criminal justice system, which is both more traumatic to people who are experiencing homelessness and more expensive for our entire community. The city of Austin has created this crisis. Instead of investing in affordable housing, we have chosen to invest in policing. We have put the interests of business owners over the lives of people experiencing homelessness. We have put into place increasingly punitive laws that attempt to push the homeless out of sight because we don't want to live with that discomfort. We don't want to feel the discomfort when people approach our cars asking for help or when we drive through the city and witness people living on the streets or under overpasses. This is how systemic racism works. Criminalizing people, especially people of color, in order to promote white people's comfort. Many of us have benefited from these policies, advancing our own comfort and business interests, and have not taken steps to become more aware and more involved. In this way, we are complicit. As members of Undoing White Supremacy Austin, we would like to take a moment to address the proposed changes to the ordinance on solicitation that focus on aggressive confrontation. We are white people seeking to understand and undermine the impact of white supremacy on white bodies and white minds and how that translates into trauma on non-white bodies and minds. The text of this ordinance raises very serious concerns. We've all heard the rash of 911 calls made by very fearful white people in which black people are targeted for going about their everyday lives. The imagined harm to white people becomes real trauma to people of color. There are already laws to address harassment, stalking, disorderly conduct, and the other behaviors addressed in this ordinance. There is no reason to create a special set of homeless codes to set a different legal standard for people who do not have access to housing. We already know that when we give more discretion to the police, the rates of citations rise and increasingly target people of color. We have to completely abolish these ordinances to decriminalize homelessness. It is the minimum we can do. Rather than continuing policies that advance gentrification and displace our communities, such as the trickle-down of a few not really affordable units here and there from developers in exchange for more luxury housing, let's build homes and provide services for those currently without permanent shelter. Let's use the funds saved by diverting people from jail to provide mental health services and recovery services. Let's use Brackenridge, which is currently sitting empty, to provide housing, medical assistance, and services to homeless people. If we want Austin to be a leader in equity, should it not be for those who have the least among us? How we decide to treat our fellow residents who need help is a clear expression of our values as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is David Johnson here? David Johnson? Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Luongo and the word "and" is gonna play a big part of what I'd like you to consider. I speak as a mother of two University of Texas students and residents, an Austin rentpayer and estate taxpayer. I would like to begin by addressing some of the disingenuous comments made on social media that paint those of us who are asking for postponement of 185 as anti-homeless. It cannot be further from the truth. I myself spend many hours in service of missions, community cafes, and transitional housing in the Houston area. I am a youth minister who teaches junior high and high school about social justice issues, including preferential treatment of the poor, life and dignity of the human person, and solidarity. Frankly, everyone I have spoken to asks for postponement has the needs and safety of the homeless in mind as well as that of our students. And, like a tweet from earlier this evening, about an hour and a half ago, you said, "We need to have empathy and not fear Mrs. Harper-Madison," and you liked it, Mr. Kassar. And you are correct. We do this by considering the "and" in the situation, not the "or." I recently learned from a visiting officer from Los Angeles, experienced in law enforcement and assisting to transition Skid Row residents, that amendments such as this, allowing completely unfettered camping and sleeping, albeit unintentionally, encourages lawlessness in tent cities because there's no overarching plan, infrastructure enforcement, and enhancements. Enhancements. It doesn't have to be all criminology. He is far more knowledgeable than I to speak about the statistics regarding predatory behavior of drug pushers, gangs, pimps, and human traffickers to exploit the homeless. Officer Dion Joseph was slated to speak and we ran late and I'm so sad that you missed the opportunity to hear his experience. It's unfortunate. He loves the homeless. He has a heart for them as disenfranchised citizens. And I highly encourage the council to bring him back and hear his ideas, his comprehensive things that they do in Los Angeles that provide housing and protect citizens and help those who get caught up in the criminal element that infiltrate homeless encampments. The homeless need protection and help, but city council needs to proceed responsibly, not reactionarily, pitting one group against another, and solutions. We ask that you slow the roll, talk to agencies, and these experts who have already made mistakes, have a plan that respects the homeless and includes public safety needs of students, residents, and business owners because, quite frankly, they're gonna provide the city with the funding that implements these comprehensive plans. Please be open-minded and look at all sides of this situation. Make sure you fully understand the immediate and long-term ramifications of any action. I ask that you postpone 185 until you have time to meet with these experts, those who have successfully and smartly budgeted programs designed specifically for cities and large universities in urban environments. Once those have been consulted, a structured multifaceted plan can be put into place taking consideration of everybody's desires in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Luongo, you had time that had been donated by Carla George and Paul Garcia's and I gave you that additional time.
Mayor.
Our next speaker. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate what councilmember Tovo said before. If we can try and be respectful of everyone who's speaking, it's really important that people feel that they have an opportunity to come and engage with us in a respectful environment.
Okay, so the speaker next is Casey VanderVort here?
And then David Johnson.
No, no, and I got you. You're gonna speak next. And after you speak, I wanna know if Casey VanderVort is here. Is Ms. VanderVort here?
Yeah.
No? What about Jackie Berger? Jackie Berger here? Okay. What about Bill Bryson? Is Mr. Bryson here? You'll speak next. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I believe I have time donated to me, ma'am.
You do? Let me check and see here. Who are the people that donated you time? Do you know?
I know Shane donated two minutes. And I know Clarence Watson donated two minutes to me as well.
Okay, so we're donating one time, one-minute time, so you're gonna have five minutes.
Five minutes? Wonderful.
Clerk, have the two names for Mr. Johnson? Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you, everyone. So, I'm glad to hear all these varying opinions, but I'd like to first off address the fact that there's a failure to address homeless individuals and instead address homelessness as this grand concept. Because the grand concept is very convenient and comfortable to address. Let's solve homelessness. But when you look at individuals, they are people. They are individuals who deserve dignity, respect. They have senses of integrity. They have rights. We've heard reference to the lineage, the genealogy of these ordinances. Yes, modern-day racist oppression, just broadened so that it's classist oppression. Because you see, a place to live, a shelter, is a staple for survival, like food or water, correct? I think we all agree. Imagine if your safety, if your financial security was threatened because your stomach growled or because you felt thirsty. That's the equivalent of being at risk of citation for not having a place to live when we already know we don't have enough places with which to house them. So, if there aren't enough beds for them to occupy, how can we cite them for not occupying the beds that don't exist? I mean, I'm a software developer. I was a software developer before I got in this world because I'm with grassroots leadership and Texas Advocates for Justice, so I know math pretty well and that doesn't add up. But see, it's inconvenient. It's an inconvenient truth, but the only thing, well, not the only, but the thing most inconvenient after facing an inconvenient truth, or the failure to face an inconvenient truth rather, is dealing with the aftermath of it. And see, Austin created this problem. Austin created this problem by failing to protect the interests of, provide for, and plan with the individuals who are most in need while we were enjoying this wonderfully boundless expansion and growth and financial development period in which we are so proud. See, we weren't thinking as a city of those who need, we were thinking of those with greed. But understand that those who do not have have equal rights to humanity as, and actually deserve more, the service from the council in front of me than those who can contribute to your campaigns. Because I'll have to call it out, because I'm not here on my behalf, I do not suffer under the burden of homelessness. But I am here on behalf of those who may not feel comfortable coming in here, who may be too concerned about whether or not their belongings are gonna be taken, who are wondering, "What happens to me if I get too close to them?" So, you're gonna hear from, or you've already heard from, I'm sure, organizations like Dana and DAA, where they say, "Before we move too fast, let's make sure we have resources." See, I like to dissect bigot speak. So, let's dissect it. Because when slavery was abolished, they didn't say, "Oh, wait a minute. Before we abolish slavery, let's find out what we're gonna do with these uneducated Negroes that are unprepared to live amongst white folks." They said, "Let's abolish it." But then we just celebrated a holiday in Texas, unfortunately, that acknowledges how Texas handles that. Digging to Juneteenth. So, here we are again saying, "Before we do what's right, before we respect the humanity and the human dignity of those most in need, one of our most vulnerable sectors of the community, let's figure out where we're gonna put them." We wanna congratulate individuals for deciding, "Hey, in my district, let's put a storehouse." We don't wanna acknowledge that we wronged them to begin with by putting these oppressive policies in place. You'll hear from SafeHorns that says, "We're focused on the safety of our community," when in fact, if they were truly focused on the safety of their community, they'd be focused on reckless use of e-scooters and alcohol use on campus. Because that has resulted in far more violent deaths and far more sexual assaults than it could ever be attributed to the homelessness on UT campus. But again, that's fear mongering. UT Police Chief wrote the letter, I saw it, and said, "Hey, we're really concerned about all these violent crimes." Really? If you're really concerned, then the entire campus, the entire student body would have rallied around the cause and said to UT, "Shave a few million off the new stadium and invest in safety." Let's define safety. But "safe" is one of those trigger words for fear mongering. But the beauty of fear is that fear creates the opportunity for courage. There is no courage without fear. You are our leaders, our elected leaders. And one of the things about leaders is that leaders have a responsibility to lead forth where there has been no movement. So, I only ask that you seize this opportunity, in the face of fear, to step into courage and move us forth as a city rather than step back in disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, 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 hey. So, the next speaker. I promise you, you're gonna be wishing you had done this. We've barely scratched the surface on speakers. Is Marina Roberts here? Why don't you come on down? And Ms. Roberts, you have time donated from Julie Fleming and Matt Arnold. Are they both here?
I don't know.
Are they here? Could you raise your hand, Julie Fleming, Matt Arnold? No? All right, you'll have three minutes when you get called. And come on down to the clerk. Then the... Mr. Bryson?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. And Mr. Bryson, you had time that was donated too, I think. You had time donated by Kathleen Otto. Is Kathleen here? No? What about George Tucker? No? You'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bill Bryson and I have the misfortune of being the next speaker after the last one. I'm a resident of Judges Hill, a neighborhood across ML... I'm a resident of Judges Hill, a neighborhood across MLK from West Campus and very close to the UT campus in the drag. I have two sons. My older son, Chris, lives in the University District in Seattle. My younger son is a student at UT and lives with me in Judges Hill. Over the six years that I've been visiting my older son in Seattle, I've watched his neighborhood deteriorate to the point where I now worry about his safety. This deterioration has occurred because the Seattle City Council has implemented the same well-intentioned, but in my opinion misguided, policies that this council is now considering. These policies have brought homeless people into Chris's neighborhood, many of whom are drug addicts and mentally ill and who I have had very personal encounters with, as well as criminals who hide in plain sight in such communities, endangering both the people who live in the community and the homeless people in that community. This has been well documented by a local TV station in Seattle in a documentary called "Seattle is Dying." And if you haven't watched it, I urge that you do. We are not at that point in the University of Area, area of Austin yet, but even with the existing restrictions on, on the homeless in Austin, people in my area, both students and non-students, have witnessed many, have witnessed many crimes at the hands of homeless and the criminals who hide in the homeless population. These crimes include assault, sexual harassment, sexual assault, robbery, and my, as, and during my son's first year at UT, the rape and murder of Haruka Weiser on the UT campus. Repealing current restrictions on the activities of homeless people before we have had a chance to see what results from item 184 will, in my opinion, only make this situation worse. Earlier this evening, Mayor Adler spoke eloquently and at length, and in my view correctly, that Austin does not want to become Seattle, San Francisco, or Portland. I completely agree with you, mayor, and I completely agree with the efforts that this council is making to create homeless shelters all over the city, including in my District Austinites are compassionate, but we must also be wise, and we need to temper our compassion with that wisdom. Compassion directs us to care for the homeless, to give them the help and resources that they need. Wisdom, however, tells us that any such displays of compassion need to be part of a plan and based on prior examples of success. We have examples of that success. Skid Row in LA, Providence, Rhode Island, and Houston all stand as examples of that success. Wisdom tells us that the people of Austin should not be placed at greater risk as a result of a quixotic rush to compassion.
Thank you.
I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
And hope you'll choose wisely. Thank you.
Is Emma Huff here? Why don't you come on down? Ms. Roberts, you have, you have four minutes.
Right. Marina Roberts, District Nine. I'm the Chair of the DSA Housing Committee. I personally knocked on hundreds of doors for this campaign, and tonight, I don't know where my brother is sleeping. We haven't seen each other in two years. He's been diagnosed with severe mental illness, and after years in and out of psych wards and rehab facilities, one day he left my dad's apartment and did not come back. My mama asked folks at homeless camps all over the city looking for him, but when she found him, he wouldn't speak to her, and we don't know why. For people like my brother, lacking shelter isn't a state of being, it's a daily struggle to survive. Texas summer without water or shade will kill you. Despite the unabashed fear mongering of our opposition, it is a statistical fact that the homeless are more likely to be victims of violent crime than perpetrators. An NHC study from December documented over 1,700 acts of violence, some of which were merely opportunistic, while many others were vicious targeted attacks, hate crimes, motivated by the same dehumanizing rhetoric our opponents employ now. Additionally, people with untreated mental illness are 16 times more likely to be killed by police, making up as many as half of fatal police shooting victims. To be homeless is to live in the crosshairs of conflict. That is where my brother is sleeping tonight. I believe politics is about the allocation of harm. Y'all have elected to be in a position where it is your job to solve problems. With that privilege and responsibility comes the challenge of determining upon which crossbeams of our societal structure to place the burdens that pay for progress. I have some difficulty following the logic that argues homeless people are the appropriate bearers of any load in addition to what they already carry, especially considering we are talking about peace for our homeless neighbors at the mere cost of sharing public spaces with the other people to whom these spaces already belong. The entirety of our opposition's strength is derived from fear mongering and dishonesty. Our strength comes from perspective and perseverance, compassion in community, solidarity, vision. We are not here because we want to legalize assault. We are not here because we want a tent for every homeless neighbor. We are here because we want a real home for every human being, and we will not stop until we have made this vision real. When you vote tonight, think of the 40% of Americans who cannot afford a $400 emergency. Not everyone has the insulation from catastrophe many of you enjoy. Think of the difference between pandering to people and leading them. Do you answer fear mongering with compliance, or do you set the record straight and move forward? Think of my brother. His name is Logan. And he deserves to be safe as much as any other person does. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next speaker is Mark Littlefield. Is Mr. Littlefield here? Okay. Mr. Littlefield, you have just the three minutes. You also have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma Huff. I graduated from UT last month. And first, I would like to thank all of you for your work. I commend you for your efforts to open new homeless shelters around Austin. I would like to share a few of my experiences in my time at UT. My first year of school, my freshman year, my classmate and best friend, Haruka Weiser, was murdered by a criminal transient man less than a block from where I lived. And here's where I would like to draw the distinction between homeless individuals and criminal transients. My second year at UT, I was catcalled, groped, and then followed down Guadalupe Street by a known criminal transient to my place of residence until a man, a male UT student, stepped in and put an end to it. My third year at UT, I was threatened and then followed from a bus stop in West Campus and had to run into a business to seek safety. Finally, my last year at UT, a fully naked, known criminal transient man climbed the tree outside my bathroom window and attempted to gain access to my home while I was showering. I'd like to concede that homelessness is not and should never be criminal, and I would like to draw the distinction here between homelessness and criminality. But this isn't about me or my experiences. This is about the upcoming classes of students who live in the West Campus area and who will live in the West Campus area. These are students who are 17 and 18 years old, who have never been on their own before and are naive. This is about the next student who will be groped, followed, assaulted, or possibly murdered in the West Campus area. With this law enacted and without increased police presence in West Campus, or better lighting, or better surveillance, I'm interested to know, how would each of you suggest that a 17 or 18-year-old student living in the West Campus area navigate that situation? I mean, I carry pepper spray, and it wasn't enough to protect me from being sexually harassed, groped, anything like that. And again, I would like to reiterate that I feel nothing but compassion for our homeless individuals in our homeless community, but I do believe that criminals and individuals with ill intent will prey on these communities and embed themselves in them, and that's what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid that another girl in my position will not make it out as luckily as I have, and will not make it out just only being groped, only living with the lifelong trauma of being sexually harassed on the street. I'm afraid that someone else is going to end up like my best friend, Haruka. That's my concern. And I invite each of you, any of you, to meet me in West Campus tonight when this ends, and walk through West Campus with me and see what it's really like out there for a five-to-20-year-old college girl trying to navigate the streets of West Campus. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Up at this podium, the next speaker will be Robert Barnes. Is Robert Barnes here? Thank you. Mr. Littlefield?
Mayor and council, my name is Mark Littlefield. I am the Board Chair of ECHO. For those who may not know, ECHO is the lead agency from the Housing and Urban Development in charge of homeless policy and ending homelessness in, in our community. It does a lot more than that, it's complicated, ask me later. I'm here tonight to tell people on both sides who, who are very passionate about this issue because they live and work downtown, they live and work at UT, that there's good news. All of y'all seem to want a plan and homelessness. The good news is, we have a plan. We have a plan that was endorsed by the Austin City Council, that was endorsed by Travis County Commissioners Court. We have a plan in homelessness. What you saw earlier today, maybe you didn't if you got here late, but earlier today, there was, this council worked on an item for a new shelter. It was difficult. It's expensive, but they made that commitment. You, you want these people up on the dais to understand the issue. I'm looking at every face up there, and this is every face that has been to meetings, that has participated in the homeless count. They've, they, they have seen it. They have seen it at night. They have seen it when it's cold. They have seen it when it's scary. I'll also say that some of the people behind me who, I think I disagree with on this issue, on, on, on these ordinances, with the APD Downtown Command and, and with DAA, they've also been involved in creating these plans and homelessness. They've also been on the homeless counts. They also have great compassion. What we, if we want to get rid of these ordinances all the way, not just amend them, we do it by ending homelessness. And that takes a commitment from our community, and it takes a financial commitment that scares some people, especially now the legislature has hit us one more time with revenue caps, but there's still an opportunity for us to do that and to solve all these problems. We've come such a long way just in the last six years since I've been on the board, and come even farther and faster, I think, because of 10-1 and because of this council and this community. We can do this, and we can do this together. It, it shouldn't matter who you are, how much money you make, the Constitution should apply to you. You should be treated fairly, and you should have a home, and we should end homelessness in Austin, and we can do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up at this podium next would be Heidi Sloan. Is Heidi Sloan here? Heidi Sloan? And then you have some time donated to you. Simon Youngbloom, is Simon Youngbloom here? No? What about Jetta Felder?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so you'll have four minutes when you speak. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Adler. My name is Bob Barnes. I've worked in the Central Business District for 15 years. I came here with my family in 2004, and I've seen good times and bad times. And this is kind of like A Tale of Two Cities. We exist in probably the best economic times of our city, and yet we are dealing with a homeless issue that is the worst that we've ever seen. And I applaud the City Council, your efforts to change the ordinances. My issue here, and if I could really define our city as city, if I could say one adjective that I think defines all of us, is a city of inclusiveness. We welcome everyone. We extend an open hand to our newcomers, to Katrina victims, to people who are coming from other countries. One of the things that I feel that we've missed here is that this is premature. I think we needed to act far, far sooner on some of the things that I think are not being covered in issue or item number 180, 185. I support 184, but I think we should delay 185 for additional review. Let's think about this. The area of the city that's going to be most affected by these ordinances will be the Central Business District. And why is that? Because this is where the largest homeless population resides, in the downtown area and in the neighborhoods closest to downtown area. And the other issue here is that if we look at who really resides there, we have tens of thousands of people that work in the Central Business District, that live in the Central Business District. We have tens of thousands of tourists that visit the Central Business District, and we have hundreds and hundreds of businesses. And the biggest issue I have is that if we're an inclusive city, this process should have been inclusive, and many of us feel that we were left out of the process. We should be part of the process. We are going to be part of the solution. And I think that we need to step back and allow more time for the public to give input. I think that we're making a mistake to approve this in one council meeting. If we, if this is the only dialogue we have before we pass this resolution, then I think we've done a disservice to the community, and I think that as we walk away, there'll be a lot of people who say that it was not democratic and we didn't allow everybody's voice to be heard. I know several council members here personally. I respect all of you, especially Greg, who I've known, whose parents I've known for years. Natasha, you're a breath of fresh air. I welcome you to City Council. P.O., I've known you for years. This is not any complaint about any council member, just as an overall observation. I think we need to be more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to this podium will be Jolene Myers. Is Jolene Myers here?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes, okay, you'll come on up. And, and when you come up, you'll have three minutes. You have four minutes, Ms. Sloan.
My name is Heidi Sloan. I am a resident of District One, and I incredibly much appreciate your leadership on this issue, council member. I'm also here representing Mobolos and Fishes once again tonight. I've realized in my seven years at Mobolos and Fishes that my job and my team's job, our work, our joy, our honor, our privilege, is to walk people home, in the literal sense, walking someone from an underpass, a campsite, a shelter, to their own house, with their own key and their own bed, where they will probably not be able to sleep for the first few nights or weeks because they have become so accustomed to sleeping on the ground. But also, and unexpectedly for me, we walk people home in the biggest sense. I have lost so many people I love at Community First. I have literally fallen to my knees at the unexpected deaths of my friends, and I have held hands over my dear ones' last breaths. I have watched and been honored to be home with these neighbors. I have also experienced the deepest anguish of my life, knowing that their deaths are so closely bound to the suffering they experienced on the streets. I know I'm not alone, and I know that's why we're here. Thank you in particular to Alvin for reminding us of this. I wanted to talk about this aspect of our work at Community First tonight, not just to say that the experience of homelessness is cruel, though I deeply believe that, but to say what an honor it is every day to walk people home, to start with a sandwich or a bus pass or a dollar, and to move towards helping people relearn how to use their microwaves and their alarm clocks, and to move towards delivering an inordinate number of eulogies. But this work always begins with building trust, with meeting people where they are, with a sandwich or a water bottle, a chance meeting on the street. And I believe that this council also deeply desires to walk people home into housing and into community and to rest. But we have to begin by building trust. And we begin building trust by repealing these ordinances. Kicking someone while they're down is not an act of trust building, and this is what these ordinances have done always, and this is what they will continue to do until we rectify that. If we want any of the excellent work y'all have been doing here to succeed, especially with haste, as I know that you do, we have to act now, tonight, to build trust so that services will be utilized, so that amazing new shelters will be occupied, so that people will want to come home, because I wouldn't live in the house of my abuser. And neither should anybody else have to. And that is the relationship that we have right now. I'm going to close in the wisdom of my friend Anthony, who now lives at Community First. He said, all in all, I'm against tormenting people that are already enduring a lasting torment. We need so much trust building, and we can do it. We need so much trust-building, and we can do it, but we have to move forward now and pay the debts that we owe for how much we have taken from people for so long.
Is Holly Kirby here? Holly Kirby? Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Joellen Myers, and I'm here tonight to ask the council to define safe and appropriate areas for camping before changing the ordinance. I listened earlier about the conditions under the Ben White Bridge, and how it seemed that, you know, you claimed that was not acceptable, to have that kind of environment that families had to pass through, and yet, when you do change this ordinance, if you do, without having the plan for where they can go, where they should go, a safe and appropriate place for them, you're just setting up downtown Austin to look like that, to be like that. It is, it's irresponsible to do that without having solutions and a plan. As you know, there are homeless people that refuse to go to the Arch to receive the services they need, because they don't want to go through that negative surroundings, unsafe conditions that they have to pass through. So they can't even get to the resources because of what it looks like around there. And by, if you adopt these new changes, I don't understand how you expect downtown businesses then to survive in that kind of environment. As it is written, without defining, you know, the camping and shelter areas that are so desperately needed. I'm saying that your work for the shelters, pushing forward on all the good that's been done tonight, it's wonderful, it's needed, it's long overdue. But by not working on 184, which has some potential for, you know, real solutions, and putting 185 before that, it makes no sense. The ordinances right now, I mean, they allow our businesses to coexist in this large homeless population downtown, while you come up with the plan and the solutions that you're suggesting in 184. I do want to say that the Austin police officers and downtown ambassadors do an incredible job. They're in an impossible situation, and I've seen firsthand how they, you know, are trying to treat the homeless with respect and compassion while still trying to get a safe environment for everyone downtown. So I just want to commend them on their hard work, and you as well, and to keep going, keep pushing forward for things that are going to make Austin, you know, the city that it was, the city it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to this podium, is Catherine Lindsay here? Are you Catherine Lindsay? Okay, take your time. Ms. Kirby, you have time donated by a couple people. Is Christian Caballero here?
She had to leave.
She left?
I don't need it.
You don't need it? Okay, then you have three minutes. You are the last three-minute speaker for this proposition.
All right, thanks. Good evening, my name is Holly Kirby, I am here representing grassroots leadership and the Homes Not Handcuffs Coalition. And the most important voice in this discussion tonight is those who are experiencing this every day, who are criminalized on the streets of Austin. So I'm going to play a video, and thank you.
It's just ridiculous, us all sitting, standing, all stupid upon the bridge. We have no place to go. We only have two shelters. It makes us like we're animals or something, not people. We do have lives. The stuff that they're doing is not helping the homeless, but it's hurting them.
That's sad, you know, to see all the teenagers pain, people that don't have somewhere to go to, have places to stay and sleep. It's not easy. You want to go to places where you know you won't get harmed, sometimes it's like, you know, where nobody else can see you. I don't see why you should be punished for trying to stay safe.
If you get a camping ticket, you get, you take care of it, but you still gotta do a lot of camp, so I don't think it really really says shit at all. Is it hindering us? Why is it giving tickets to people for sleeping, for living, that, or idiotic thing? Like giving kids the merit, does it train them to not camp and not be a good citizen? They have no choice. So, you know, getting a voucher, a hotel, that'd be like cool, right?
I have no money, camping, as they call it, camping, for sleeping under the 183 bridge. You know, it's a vicious cycle. And if you keep giving the same people candy, then they're going to keep getting ones, they're going to keep getting, you know, more bills they can't pay. I think it's tax dollars you could use to help us get off the streets. I saw a plan and going for it, to tell them that I had no money. They don't, they know I have no money, so I just sleep under the bridge. And they want to let me, I think it's a $225 fine. So, I just let it go. I also seen kind of like, oh yeah, it was all about that, my life is a bad time, thank you, I appreciate it, you know, like, and then I guess the police are doing their job, but it just, it always feels unfair, it feels, it's just more that feeling of nobody caring. And here's another way we're going to show you, you don't care.
Is Ray Collins here? Mr. Collins, you'll be up next. And Ms. Lindsay, you're our last three-minute speaker against these propositions. Go ahead.
I just want to say I don't want to be hissed at or told I'm a bigot or a racist because I oppose 185. I purchased a condo downtown, a small, very small condo, about 15 years ago, and then I purchased another one about three years later. I committed several of my friends to purchase homes in 78701. I wanted to have people moving, this was way back before, I think the shore was the only thing being built. And I wanted people to move downtown, I wanted more businesses downtown, more restaurants, more tourists, more everything. I love Austin, I went to UT in the 80s, we were very friendly to the homeless then, we knew pretty much all of them by name. I don't know if y'all were here in the 80s, but we knew our homeless people, we supported them. I'm a huge Democrat, my parents are Democrats. I vote straight ticket almost, so I don't want to be called a racist today.
Hey, 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 come on.
I just don't.
Come on, come on, come on.
But y'all, I actually live downtown, and I'm walking the streets all the time with my neighbors or by myself, and I don't think any of y'all actually live downtown, downtown proper. I live a few blocks from here, except maybe Mayor Adler. But it is scary to be a woman at times on the streets by yourself. And I just don't think y'all know what it's like. My boyfriend and I were accosted, he ended up in a fistfight with a homeless person. I was told I was a bitch and a devil because we did not give them money. We didn't give them money because I only had credit cards at the time. And we were chased, it's not pleasant to be so frightened. And what I want to ask everyone today is just to hold on and vote for this after you get all the input from everybody, and except councilperson Tovo's suggestion that everybody come up with a park in your district, that you can allow camping, to stop giving these tickets out. And I agree with that, I don't want those tickets to be given out. I want to support the homeless people, I do support them, I support Community First. I support many, many social programs with my tax dollars and just donating. But the people that fund all these programs are the people paying the taxes and the small business owners, and the large business owners. We're not going to have people moving to our city, businesses will be shut down if y'all are allowing people just to sleep right on Second Street, you know, in front of Joe's coffee shop, and not ticketing them or not coming up with a plan. So I agree with what councilperson Tovo suggested earlier today, and only ticket these people if they're not going to the designated site to sleep. And we should not have sleeping everywhere, all over the city, we just shouldn't. We're not going to have tourists and tax dollars here to support all these programs that we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, one of the real advantages, and I think it's significant that we have right now compared to cities like Los Angeles and San Francisco and Seattle, is that the conversation that we're having in this room is unlike any of the conversations that are happening at any public meetings in those cities. We still have an opportunity to take advantage of the fact that there's a collective will to make this the highest priority and put resources against it and try to find solutions. That does not exist the same way in those cities, because battle lines have been drawn. We really need to take fullest advantage of that, because we're in a unique position. I would urge everybody to really listen to the individual learned experience truths that people are walking up to the podium with, because we need to figure out on both sides how we work with those truths and get to a really good place. So listen, everybody, and try the best to learn, recognizing that we come from very different places, our truths are very different, but if we can work with where people are coming from and what they're thinking on both sides, we can actually hold on to what it is that is our attribute, which I believe is going to enable us to actually fix this. Mr. Collins, you're up next, and then after you is Andrea Black. Is Andrea Black here? Yes, you have time donated from Bethany Carson. Is Bethany Carson here?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have two minutes when you speak. Mr. Collins, you have one minute.
Does council recall the chaos that resulted after you repealed juvenile curfews? That sound you hear is silence, and today you're not even repealing a single thing. Repealing of the juvenile curfews is your precedent for what's going to happen when you modify the homeless ordinances. Every person in agency following Chief Manley's June 6 testimony emphasized the fact that the bench warrants issued for the majority of homeless people who do not show up for their Class C misdemeanor court date do impact their ability to find housing. Most important, there is the widely agreed upon fact arising from the June 6 testimony that housing first is the model to be pursued because it works. De facto, our law enforcement officers are doing counterproductive shadow case management of Austin's homeless population via Class C misdemeanors. Then these people enter the criminal justice system and experience not justice. Now, I'll put my slide up and I'll leave.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. I'm sorry, one minute goes so quickly. Thank you. The next speaker after Ms. Black's going to be Lauren Ross. Is Ms. Ross still here?
Oh, she's donating to me, so actually, yeah.
Okay, thank you. What about Julia Von Alexander?
She left.
She left. What about Jonathan Lowell? Do you want to speak? You don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to. You have one minute, go ahead.
Oh, no, so I think I, okay, so I think I have three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Because I also have Juniper, so I have three. Bethany, Juniper, and myself. Bethany, Lauren, and myself.
Okay, do you have both of those? Do you have both of those? All right, three minutes, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Black, I'm a resident of District 1. I strongly support the proposed changes to ordinance as positive steps in the right direction to stop decriminalizing homelessness. However, I strongly oppose the addition of the aggressive confrontation clause in the solicitation ordinance. There are already laws, as we've heard again and again, there are already laws in place to actually do, to actually address so many of the issues and some of the behavior that people are talking about. I'm actually, I've got prepared remarks that I want to say, but I'm just sitting here with this sense of just ache in my stomach hearing this. Yes, we need to come together, I think it is wonderful to hear that we have, that there is a consensus around wanting to deal with homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness and actually work on this issue, and yet the approaches are so incredibly different. And the fact that I really just feel like we're listening to so much fear mongering, and we're listening to putting white comfort above the needs of all our residents, and it's just, I'm about to just, I'm physically ill from this. And so I cannot even begin to tell you about the experiences of my neighbors across the street. I live on the east side, and my neighbors across the street, four generations of an African-American family who's lived in this community since the 1960s, had to leave their home after the matriarch died because they could not afford to live in that home any longer. And now, one of the, one of the family members had to seek services from the Arch, right? And I also, just, and I reached out to many of you on May 8th, because I saw city staff physically removing people from under the 183 underpass, right? In the midst of a storm, I was getting a text alert on my phone telling me to seek shelter at the very moment the city staff were physically removing people and then en masse throwing all their belongings on the sidewalk. And I saw a man standing there, hopeless, defeated, with his mattress on a cart on the street. Like, this is despicable, this is inexplicable behavior. And I know, I appreciate it that Ms. Kitchen, you reached out, and I know that you promised to do, to deal with this and look into the policies, also Greg Cassar, and I'm really looking forward to understanding what those policies are going to be. But I really feel like I want to go back to what the previous speaker was talking about. This is a question of really building trust. We're on the same page, but where do we start? Do we keep up the criminalization until we have homes, or do we actually change the conversation and look at people who are experiencing homelessness as human beings, and actually treat them with respect and with trust, and reach out with a different way? We are, we are going to be moving towards solutions, we do not need to have these criminalizing laws on the books that keep pushing them further and further away. I think I've said enough, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lowell, you have one minute to speak. Is Sandra Molinari here? Pass, thank you. Is Stephen Potter here?
Yes.
Do you want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You have some time donated from Jennifer Campbell, is Jennifer Campbell here? And you also have time donated from Steve Harrell, is Steve Harrell here? I don't see Mr. Harrell, so you'll have two minutes if you want to come on up to this podium. You have one minute, sir.
Jonathan Lowell, District 9. I just wanted to quickly say that what I keep hearing, what this is about is trying to disentangle experiencing homelessness from criminality. There should be no biological functions that need to be criminalized, and most of what I hear from the other side is continuing to conflate the two. And so I just want to make sure that everyone here is catching that, please, because we have to make sure that just existing day-to-day, experiencing homelessness is not a crime, that includes sleeping, that includes getting the resources you need to eat and whatever other basic needs you have. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so after Mr. Potter speaks, the next speaker was Will Hyatt, is Will Hyatt here?
I think he stepped out briefly.
Okay, if he comes back in, you should let the clerk know. Is Teddy Terhune here? Do you want to speak, Mr. Terhune? Are you here? No? What about Carlotta Garcia? Is Carlotta Garcia here? I think a gentleman's walked in, his name I called, wants to come to this podium. Sir, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stephen Potter, homeless, homeless advocate, homeless as in I spent last night on the street. I've heard a lot of concern about the downtown businesses and the effects that these repeal, these amendments to the ordinances have. And present, the downtown businesses love to complain about the homeless, and I get it, I really do, I'm a videographer, my musician friends are doing well, the downtown bars are doing well, I'm doing well. I don't want to see anybody strung out on K2. I don't want to see anybody strung out on K2, laying in front of Maggie May's any more than anybody else. But giving someone a ticket for this does nothing to address that, does nothing to solve that, does nothing to fix that. And I have to ask, how many of these downtown businesses actually pay all their workers a living wage? Now, living wage is a separate conversation for a separate battlefield, but my point is this: these businesses are actively profiting by not paying their workers enough to put roofs over their heads, therefore contributing to the very problem they are complaining about. Their ways are the old ways. As you've recognized, the old ways do not work. Let go of the old ways. You have made solving homelessness in Austin a top priority. I commend you for that. Take a step in that direction. Let go of the old ways. Work, vote to accept these amendments and work with the homeless to work on real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Hyatt, you're going to speak, and you'll have one minute. When you start, let me see, is, are you Mr. Hyatt or Mr. Terhune?
Hyatt.
Hyatt.
One minute.
One minute, just a second, please. Is Teddy Terhune here? And we've said no. Carlotta, Carlotta Garcia? Is Carlotta Garcia here?
No.
No? What about Tandera?
Tandra.
Tandra, Louis? Why don't you come? You have some time donated from Miriam Nazari. Is Ms. Nazari here? No? What about Robert Sansusi? Okay. So you'll have two minutes when you have a chance to speak. You have one minute, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Will Hyatt. I'm with House of the Homeless and also Open Door Ministry represent in a hungry-for-God church home that works with orphaned kids that are out of foster care, that are aged out. And we, we need real answers. I'm here really mostly to represent House of the Homeless and how HTH, housethehomeless.org is, is a good way to go about looking into this problem a little further. And then Universal Living Wage, which you can bounce from that, this site into the other one, or go there directly, universallivingwage.org, is another way that we're going to have to go in order to solve this problem more long term. I think it's a good start that we have with the shelter and that ultimately, Austin, Texas is going to take the lead. In 2002, this council agreed to work their employees up to a universal living wage at that time, and I think they've fallen short on that and that that would be a good way is to lead by example. Currently, the universal living wage will be $18 an hour. Lastly, churches have to be more involved. I think the spirit of the law is just equally as important or more important than the law itself. So we need to really follow our hearts into working this, housethehomeless.org, universallivingwage.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're almost to only 100 speakers left. We're not quite there yet. Is Nate Knoff here? Okay. Go ahead. Ma'am, you have two minutes.
Me?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Tandra Louis, Austin native, preschool teacher, and city commissioner for the Board of Community Development. People without homes are not a threat. Poverty that has been thrust into their lives is pure violence. If any councilperson believes that arresting and ticketing homeless folks is beneficial to helping humans better their lives, then that city councilperson does not deserve their Same goes for our mayor. We won't sit around and be complicit to the city's hatred for poor folks. As a black woman in one of the most segregated cities in the country, with one of the most violent police forces in the state, I only feel empathy for our homeless neighbors. I know all too well the fear that comes, the fear that cops cause on one psyche, and I can't imagine trying to hide from them in plain sight. As a homeowner, I am disgusted by folks who have and still want more. As a socialist, I am sick and tired of those with privilege treating the rest of us like a problem while using cops to protect their property. I urge our city council to repeal these violent ordinances fully and get one step closer to actually making Austin the progressive hub it claims to be. You cannot be a city of artists if artists cannot afford to live here. Thank you.
Is Andrew Costigan here? Andrew Costigan? Yes? You have some time donated from Claudia Corum. Is Claudia Corum here? And is Michael Lewis here? Michael Lewis? Okay, so you'll have three minutes. But first, sir, you have two minutes.
My name is Nate Knoff. I'm a 21-year-old undergraduate computer science student. In my experience as a student, I've heard dozens, if not hundreds, of stories of violence, of drunkenness, of sexual assault, and in every single story, the culprit is other students. I have never in my life been threatened by a homeless person. My girlfriend or her friends have never been threatened by a homeless person. I don't know a single classmate who has. Of course, many people feel uncomfortable seeing a homeless person. It's uncomfortable to know that a fellow human being is going without a home while you do. I'm making good money at an internship right now. I've got a warm bed to go back to. Not everybody has that. Any personal discomfort or guilt I may feel personally is nothing compared to the literal discomfort of sleeping on the street, of living without a home. It would be profoundly selfish and shameful of me to get up here and say that my personal discomfort is more important than the real material struggle of our homeless brothers and sisters. My conscience demands that I ask you to make the humane decision, the kind decision, the right decision. Austin needs homes, not handcuffs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the next speaker's going to be Ally Elsie. Is she here? Ally Elsie? Coming down. You have some time donated, too, from Ken Chambers. Is Ken Chambers here? Yes? And is Janine Garrett here? Or Garrett, Janine?
No.
Yes? Okay. So you'll have three minutes when you come up. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Andrew. I'm an educator and a UT student. I'm a DSA member. In my view, these ordinances, rules, and enforcement practices are irrational and immoral because they don't address the roots of the problem and they're inhumane. They exist because some people perceive people without homes as a problem as opposed to people. They also exist so some people can make money and other reasons that are also ill conceived. These ordinances, rules, and enforcement practices should be ended as they should never have existed. After they are repealed, the money that was used towards enforcing them should go towards addressing the fact that some people don't have homes or places to stay in a manner that is sensible. The funds should be used to find people homes and places to stay, addressing inequity at its root and centering people. I work in Austin. I don't live in Austin. I live in Del Valley. There are people without homes or places to stay in my area, in southeastern Travis County and Bastrop County, for a lot of different reasons, including the fact that Austin and the surrounding area is an expensive place to live. Because they don't have homes, they too could be affected by these ordinances if they're not repealed. Some people in my community talk and listen to people who, without homes, and are friends with them. Some people in my community house people without homes or places to stay. I've done that, too. I've learned a lot from people without homes or places to stay and become friends, too. I'm sure others here have had similar experiences. I imagine others have not. After we get rid of these ordinances and use the money that was used to enforce them for more sensible alternatives like housing, we can work together more, first by talking more and listening more to people without homes or places to stay and learn from them how to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally, you want to go ahead?
Thank you. My name is Ally Elsie, 11th District 1. These ordinances must be changed. As they exist now, they only serve to undermine homeless people's humanity. These ordinances are cruel. They, they destroy trust. They push people we deem unproductive or unworthy out of public view, and they fundamentally do not help to solve homelessness. Policing will never be the solution or even a part of the solution. And the number of citations issued year after year is staggering. From 2015 to 2018, over 10,000 citations were issued for sitting or lying down, camping or panhandling in public. It's important to understand that despite all of these citations, homelessness is still at crisis levels in 2019. Policing has already proven itself not just to be an ineffective tool, but a moral horror and a blight that must end. And I applaud Councilperson Kitchen for welcoming a new shelter in her district, but I do want to speak about the amendment she brought forward. In my opinion, the amendment that you have suggested is deeply misguided. By accepting this amendment, we would be caving to the demands of wealthy homeowners, specifically in South Austin, and these demands are antisocial. And they fundamentally ignore the most marginalized people in our society. The people who have voiced these concerns, the homeowners, they cite safety as the issue again and again. People feel so comfortable using that word to describe protecting their property or protecting themselves from uncomfortable interactions, but fail to understand how unsafe it is to be homeless in this city. What about homeless people's safety? By prohibiting people from seeking refuge under overpasses, we are making homeless people markedly less safe. Where are people going to go for shade when it's 110 degrees outside? Where are they going to go for some amount of privacy? Where are they going to go for rest? Councilperson Kitchen said it yourself, you said it yourself. The overpass in South Austin is close to a transit center, which many homeless people undoubtedly need access to. We would be displacing many people from the best option they have to keep themselves safe. So don't let the most fortunate people in this city prioritize their petty sense of safety when this amendment could mean that people die needlessly. And if you've been listening, you know that these ordinances kill people. Many of my comrades have talked about this more eloquently than I have. Heidi Sloan and Marina Roberts come to mind, and I just wanted to say, these ordinances have to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Elizabeth Gibson here? Elizabeth Gibson? Yes, come on down. You're going to have one minute. Is Fred Schmidt here? Fred Schmidt? No? What about Jennifer Santos? No? What about Vanessa Farrow? No? What about Musumi Shaw? What about Rick Russell? Okay, why don't you come? You have some donated time from Robert, Robin Johnston. Is Robin here?
No, she had to leave.
She had to leave? What? Okay, so you'll have one minute. Each have one minute. Go ahead.
Mayor Adler and council, my name is Elizabeth Gibson, and I'm a business owner downtown on Second Street now for 15 years. I'm also a resident and homeowner in District 9, and I do pay my employees a living wage and always have. I'm here today to ask you to designate and provide shelter before changing the ordinance. I've written all of you about the safety concerns I have and my personal experiences as well as my staff and colleagues. I do agree we have a homeless crisis. I support immediate shelter and provisions in Item 184. We do need more resources for the homeless. I support no aggressive confrontation. I support designated areas for camping with access to bathrooms and showers, but I do not support camping on city property as the ordinance is written currently. I do not support registered sex offenders camping and living on city sidewalks and streets. We have all worked very hard for many years to make downtown safe and vibrant. Please take the time to plan and keep us all safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Julie Fitch here? Why don't you come on down? You'll have one minute. You have one minute, sir.
My name is Rick Russell. I'm District 8, and I do not want to see any of the laws diluted or done away with because if we do, the only people we're going to handcuff are right up there on that wall, our cops that put their tails on the line for us every day. I wish the people that are here tonight would have been present this afternoon to hear the testimonies. Every one of those were against the homeless folks, and they were breaches against the public peace. And Ms. Morgan, breaches against public peace are a violation of state law. You can look that up under Woods versus State, 1936 Criminal Court of Appeals. And if the City of Austin does not repeal or does not keep the current laws, then they are going to be encouraging the homeless folks to be in violation of state laws. Now, we're not against being homeless because we discussed this this afternoon, but to dilute the tools that our law enforcement have to protect us is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Claudia Cuccia here? Claudia Cuccia? What about Johnny Cuccia? What about Alicia Weigl?
She's outside.
She's outside? Tell her to come back in. Is Jim Rigsby here? Mr. Rigsby? You have some time donated earned by Scott Butke. Is Scott here? Yes? And is Kenneth Liao here? Liao? No? So you'll have two minutes. Yes? Got you. Okay, sorry, I didn't see you in the back. You'll have three minutes, sir. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, good evening. Julie Fitch with Downtown Austin Alliance. I'm here tonight to ask you not to complete the adoption of Item 185 until there's time to nail down some, some language that, that really addresses the issues that we're all trying to address. There need to be changes. We don't think the language is there yet. We think that there is some ambiguity. We don't believe APD will, will fully understand how to interpret and how to enforce what, whatever is passed. There just hasn't been enough time to get there. There are some intent language that is also ambiguous, and there's a lot of great work that we can build on. And Item 184 certainly helps us go in that right direction. We're asking you not to adopt 185 as proposed tonight until you bring forward the solutions called for in Item 184. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fitch. Rigsby, Alicia, why don't you come on up? You have some time that's donated to you by Jasmine Patel. Is Jasmine here?
Yeah.
Okay, what about Jennifer Pumphrey?
She is here.
Not here?
She's here. I think she's outside.
Okay. You're going to have two minutes until Jennifer Pumphrey comes in and gives you the third minute. Here she comes. So you'll have three minutes when it happens. Jennifer Pumphrey? So you'll have three minutes. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you to the people that, that gave me time. I, I wrote this down so I can try to get it in two minutes, hopefully. My name is Jim Rigsby. I'm pastor of San Andrews Presbyterian Church. We're just outside the city limits, so we receive a lot of the homeless population in our homeless ministry who are fleeing the Austin policies. We get a disproportionate amount of people who are aged, who are mentally ill, who are veterans with PTSD, survivors of sexual violence, and people suffering with addictions. I've done weddings for some of our guests. I've done one baptism, but I've done way too many funerals, and those happen on the out, outlying regions of town that are called the paupers graveyard. I cannot even begin to describe the look on the faces of Austin's throwaway people as they realize that they too will share that same dehumanizing and anonymous fate. I've been here most of the day, and I've heard the fears of people who live in the neighborhoods and the areas, and I understand that. But America needs to realize that trying to live in a bubble is not going to keep us safe. We already have more people in prison than any other country. We sweep undocumented people under the rug, male illness, and the people who don't have adequate shelter. What we've discovered at San Andrews is that if you treat people as problems, that's what you're going to get. If you expect them to die out of your sight and mind, they become your greatest problems. But we've also found that if you treat people as members of our human family, they can be some of our best neighbors. Austin, like our nation and like our world, stands at a crossroad between a world defined by property rights that creates a living hell for those without property and a world defined by human rights. and a world defined by human rights. That will be the closest thing to what Dr. King described as the beloved community, and that is, I think, all of our hopes and vision for Austin. Thank you.
Pastor, thank you. Is Michael Goremco here? That was Michael Goremco? Why don't you come on down?
I think Ash Khan gave me another minute.
You only can get two people donate you time.
Oh, sorry. Okay, cool, I'll try to keep it quick. Hi, everyone.
That's okay, so you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Alicia, I'm a resident of District Nine, I'm a proud member of the Human Rights Commission, and I wish I'd had time to prepare some, like, really well-versed statement about how criminalizing homelessness is a flagrant violation of human rights, which I think we all know it is. But I just got back from Brazil, I was there for a family wedding, I used to live there, and so what's top of mind is a story from when I used to live in a city called Salvador in the northeast of Brazil, that, like, the opposite of Austin is, like, 80% black, the rest of the population's very mixed. That is to say that I stick out like a sore thumb there. And I spent a lot of my time walking around the city because I didn't have a car, and public transit is nothing to speak of. And a lot of that time I spent actually getting to know the homeless community, which is something that's just more cultural there. I think here we're accustomed to, like, tripping over people or walking to the other side of the street or averting our gaze, whereas there, I got to kind of share humanity with these people. And I still remember one of the men who either thought he was a pilot or used to be a pilot before mental illness took hold and could no longer do that, and then another man who knew that I was from the state, so he always wanted to talk to me about Michael Jackson. The reason I'm saying this is that I also remember the man that tried to rob me one day on the streets, and you can't identify a homeless person, but I don't think this guy was homeless. I still remember his gold chain with a cross. He looked like a very successful gringo robber that did pretty well for himself. But so he was trying to rob me, and a homeless man actually left the streets and came and talked to this man and said, "You can't rob that gringa, I know that gringa." And I still don't remember if I had spoken with him or if he just knew me from, like, being a member of the community, but I never got to thank him for giving me the time to, like, flee the situation. So I'm hoping tonight can just be some small thank you by trying to speak against the narrative that's been happening in this country since the age of lynch mobs, which is valuing the fear of white women above the lived experience of marginalized communities. And I think y'all know, you hear me speak a lot, I'm also a survivor of sexual assault, and I know that walking home tonight, I'm not going to feel any more safe knowing that we funnel homeless people into the prison pipeline than I would if we actually addressed the root causes of sexual assault. And I don't think we should criminalize homelessness, blanket criminalize homelessness, any more than we should blanket criminalize frat guys, because there's a whole lot more raping happening in fraternities than there is by homeless people statistically. So I feel for the victims of sexual assault in this room. I'm one of you, and it's really hard for me to talk about, and there's a lot of emotion wrapped up, but, you know, criminalizing homelessness is not the answer to sexual assault. It's not the answer to solving homelessness. We all know we need to build more housing, we need to resolve economic disparity of wealth in the city. That's about all I have to say. There are people that are much better qualified to talk about this than I am, so thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is Molly English here? That was Molly English? Molly English? What about you here? Okay, you have some time donated by Max Seifert. Okay, so you'll have two minutes, Ms. English, when you're up. Mr. Goremco, you have one minute.
Okay, I could maybe use a little more time if someone's willing, but I'm from District Eight, my name's Michael, I organize with Circle C Democrats and with Austin DSA. You know, I want to talk a little bit, I'm a homeowner in District Eight, but as a homeowner in District Eight who lives in Circle C, one of the best neighborhoods in the city, we still have friends who have begged on GoFundMe for money when faced with a medical emergency. Anyone in our neighborhood would worry about being homeless if they lost their ability to work. You know, anyone might not be able to come up with $400 for an emergency in District Eight, not necessarily Circle C. We've all seen videos of well-to-do black people shot by police in horrible circumstances. That's life in the big city now. This is what it means to sell your labor for necessities. You're at risk of starvation if you can no longer labor. We're all homeless in this situation because the system doesn't provide, and it doesn't care that it doesn't provide, because capital has no feelings. And if we want it to change, we have to stop pretending that we are better off than our homeless neighbors and start fighting the oligarchy together. What we cannot do is pay for some of us to enforce the very social structure that is keeping us all down. The more deprived we make the homeless, the more scared we are of becoming homeless, and the less we all fight for our rights and basic needs to housing, healthcare, education, and meaningful work in a sustainable environment. If the homeless are scary, but the guys in the suits who create the engines driving homelessness in every major city, 500,000 rough sleeping every night in America are not, then our whole politics is a delusion. Many people experiencing homelessness are full-time workers and students. The oligarchy is terrifying, and it is increasingly militarized. And if you think they will protect you, remember that people like you have to beg for money from friends to get basic healthcare. And the police won't help you solve that problem, you'll just be on your own to suffer, ultimately hopeless before the power of capital. Thank you Paige Ellis for standing with the workers.
And somebody donated you, somebody donated you a minute, and that was credited to your time. Is Molly Williams here? Why don't you come on down? This is Speaker 152. Go ahead, I think you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Molly English, I'm a constituent of Kathy Tovos in District Nine. Since April of this year, many members of the Austin DSA, including myself, has visited the homes of hundreds, if not thousands, of Austin residents to discuss the repeal of these ordinances. The responses we received from your constituents were overwhelmingly supportive of the repeal, so we implore you, our elected city council members, to fully support it as well. Additionally, we do not agree with the proposed amendments by Councilmember Kitchen or Mayor Adler. Kitchen's ban on underpass camping will reduce access to life-saving shade, and people will die in the Texas heat as a result. Adler's amendment, changing solicitation to confrontation, does not change the fact that assault and harassment are already illegal in the state of Texas. The amendment does little but pander to the very few that oppose this repeal. It sacrifices the integrity of our support for the most vulnerable population in order to appease the few among us that are lacking in compassion. The opposition posed tonight by Downtown Austin Alliance and others is nothing more than fear-mongering, and quite frankly, it's a waste of all of our time. If we are to solve the problem of homelessness, we are not going to do it by pushing our fellow Austinites out of sight and away from the resources that they need. We will not do it by imposing a cowardly squeamishness, it is squeamishness, imposing that upon our neighbors that are experiencing misfortune. And we will certainly not do it by continuing to authorize violence to keep these people out of our sights. We will begin to solve homelessness in Austin by repealing these three ordinances, that's the beginning, and ensuring that our homeless brothers and sisters have access to shelter, sustenance, and healthcare. We will solve it by continuing to fight for housing, a human right for each and every one of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Ryan Pollak here? Ryan Pollak? No? Yeah, come on down. You have time donated by Abigail Bellen here. What about Gatlin Johnson? Okay, so, Mr. Pollak, you'll have three minutes when you come up. You have two minutes, I think.
Hi, my name is Molly Williams, and I live in District Five. I live in the area where the 290 Manchak homelessness issue is really kind of increasing as each day goes on, and for a year, I've been waiting, just, and I've talked to these people, and I've been waiting to see, you know, who's going to come to clean up, who's going to come to, you know, to help these people, because what kind of a way of life is this? And as the time goes on, it's like, is this the status quo in Austin now? Because this is so different from what, you know, I knew, I've been a part of Austin for a long time, I've lived in this community where I am now for quite a while, and things, as we all have said, are just getting worse. And so I called the state representative, and her office said it's a local matter. I called the local, and Councilmember Renteria said, "Oh, you know, hands off for us because it's a state matter." Well, I called the state, and they said it was a city matter. I called the city, and they say there's nothing we can do. The police come because there's a lot of crime in our area, and increased amount of crime, and they come and they say there's nothing they can do. And the thing is, it's like, I have a compassionate heart for the people and the way that they're living, and as I said, I've talked to them. Some of them, we see, everyone in this room, everyone tonight, has seen homelessness as a social ill, as a problem, that can be solved and should be solved, but please understand that talking to some of these people, I don't, not all, some, they don't see it as a problem. They act like they don't see it as a problem, that is the way of life that they're comfortable with. They don't want the responsibility of, you know, that comes with a life that's exiting from homelessness, and so that's just how they operate, you know? They have a hierarchy there, they have, hey, I'm kind of a kingpin or a big shot in this homeless community. And, was that two minutes?
Yes, finish your thought.
Um...
Real fast.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that the pooping, the peeing, and that, if we let this ordinance go through as written, we're not ready for it yet. If we let it go through as written, that means homeless people are coming to Austin, and we have campsites all over publicly in Austin, just like the one that I have in my home, and there's all kinds of unsanitary conditions.
We need to let some other people get a chance to speak too. Thank you. Mr. Pollak has three minutes to speak, and then after, Mr. Pollak is, is Peter Sheets here? Is Peter Sheets here? No? What about Malcolm Yates? Why don't you come on down? You'll have one minute when you speak. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council. My name is Ryan Pollak, I'm a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, as well as their Committee on Political Education, the Central Labor Council, and DSA, Austin DSA. To the lady who just spoke complaining about the trash, I also live in the area around Manchak, but I'm in Councilmember PO's district. Do you see any trashcans around there? Do you see any porta-johns, any bathroom facilities whatsoever? No, you don't. So what do you expect these people to do? They don't have anywhere to go legally, even if they, you know, where are you going to haul it to? Somebody's going to arrest them for that. If you don't provide people with these facilities, you have no room to complain. That has to happen. As far as criminalizing this, APD was going to fly out an officer from LAPD to lobby for them, the notoriously, the paragon of justice, the LAPD. Because they need to justify their jobs. And this is just one more thing. They get out, they gave out over 18,000 citations in between 2014 and 2016 for no sit, no lie, no camping. It doesn't work, and it's, their lobbying is transparent, we don't need them, they currently take up 41% of the city budget. That 41%, instead of criminalizing this, could be going to preventive measures, actually getting people off the street. Housing, treatment, mental health first responders that don't have guns and don't end up with I want us to have a city where everybody enjoys living here. Everybody, not just the people downtown, not just the people that have several students going to UT, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mandy Blot here? Mandy Blot? No? What about Jordan Stewart? You're here? Come on down. You'll have one minute. Introduce yourself, and you have one minute, sir.
My name is Malcolm Yates, I'm a volunteer, I've been cleaning up parks in the East Riverside area for years. I would like you to see some of these camps that we've been cleaning up. Here is a camp that caught fire near our neighborhood. Here is one of the camps in our neighborhood. This is some of the stolen bicycles that they were dismantling. There's a lot of other things that are also out there. There's a flat-screen TV, there is a golf cart that got stolen, here's people selling crack. So this is, over a period of years, the number of events it took to clean out this one park. Please, it's really disheartening to volunteers who clean up these parks for Council to consider allowing camping in parks. Please do not allow camping in parks.
Thank you. Is Dion Joseph here? No? What about Greg Wilson? Is Greg Wilson here? What about Mark Terry? Is Mark Terry here? What about Matthew Mesyogi? All right, what about Andre Boudreau? Okay, then how about... What about Jordan Stewart? That's you. What about Joshua Holland? Why don't you come on down? You'll have one minute, Mr. Holland. Mr. Stewart, go ahead, you have a minute.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jordan Stewart, I live in District Nine, three blocks from UT, in fact, and I speak in favor of repealing these ordinances with, of course, concerns about the amendments. I am also speaking directly to the opposition of wealthy suburbanites, some from hours away claiming to speak for me and my neighbors, for students who are out for the summer who would speak in favor of decriminalization as well. Criminalization of homelessness is another barrier for attaining employment and housing. It robs people of their basic dignity for simply trying to exist. We hear talk about families and tourists walking about homeless people, but what about families and children who experience homelessness in this city? And others who are on the verge of being forced into this. This change, opposition to this change, is rooted in white supremacy and legacy of white supremacy and Jim Crow. If you don't believe that, the skin color of everyone speaking in opposition is very similar to mine. They reference Los Angeles, a deeply reactionary police force, and finally, Seattle is dying, so we mentioned that earlier, that was funded by the Pro-Trump Sinclair Broadcasting Corporation. That's right, we don't need right-wingers telling Austin what's best for us.
Thank you very much. Is Anna DeFradis here? Anna DeFradis? And time donated from Jasmine Harrington? Okay, so you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, you have a minute.
Hey, thank you. My name's Josh from District Five. I would like to add to what the gentleman from Echo said earlier, he said there's a plan to end homelessness, and there is, it's called Austin's Action Plan to End Homelessness. And if I'm not mistaken, it was approved unanimously just last year by the city council, and at least two of its five goals are clearly being violated by these ordinances, which are providing outreach and addressing racial disparities. It's hard to provide outreach for a community that's actively being pushed into the dark through threats of fines and imprisonment. And secondly, considering that people of color make up a disproportionate number of those who are imprisoned and those who are homeless, according to the city's own statistics, imprisoning the homeless further is only going to exacerbate those disparities. So I, and I recommend that the city follows its plan that it passed in 2018, and I think one step to do that would be to approve, repeal the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Greg Wilson here? Greg Wilson? Speaker 205? No? What about Mark Terry? Mark Terry, 223. I'm going to call this, I think that's, no, we're back up. What about Marina Garrett? Why don't you come on down? You have time donated from Amanda Lewis. Is Amanda Lewis here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
She's in the back.
Okay, thank you. So you'll have two minutes then. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Anna DeFradis, and I'm here in my capacity as a co-founder of the Survivor Justice Project to support the decriminalization of homelessness. And with exception, I'm not in favor of the proposal to revise Austin's current code relating to prohibiting solicitation with aggressive confrontation prohibited. I think that language is weird and out of step with what we're trying to I think that language is weird and out of step with what we're trying to achieve here tonight. I think many of you know me as someone who is keenly interested in how our community responds to sexual assault. And I'm here because I'm deeply disturbed about the way the issue of sexual assault in particular, and the safety of women and girls more generally, is being used as justification to treat as criminal behavior the things that people who are homeless must do to survive, whether it's sleeping, sitting down, asking for help. And so, this is the narrative that's out there that I've heard, that I'm responding to. I can't sit back and allow that narrative to prevail, especially not given our dark, painful, real, and racist history of the mere fear of sexual assault being used as a weapon, a tool of oppression to criminalize black and brown people. And I know that that's really hard to hear, but it is the truth. It is the truth about our history. So I am in favor of decriminalizing homelessness to allow us to divert resources to the community to adequately address homelessness and sexual assault. And if we want to get real about sexual assault and homelessness—and I believe that we do—let's talk about the fact that it's actually our homeless brothers and sisters who are among those in the community at the greatest risk for sexual assault. And let's get real about the fact that rape on campus amongst students, people who know each other and perhaps are even dating, is where our earnest energies should go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Nicholas Sawyer here? Why don't you come on down? You have time donated by Eliza McDonald. Is Eliza McDonald here? Okay, so you'll have two minutes, Mr. Sawyer. I want to point out to the room that there are 61 speakers left to speak. All of them are in favor of the resolution. I point that out just in case. Everybody's entitled to take their time and speak if they want to. It's 10 till midnight, and we're still going to debate this at the end. So don't feel compelled to speak, all 61 people, but certainly you are welcome to do that. Why don't you go ahead? You have, as I recall, two minutes.
Councilmembers, Mayor Adler. My name is Marina Garrett, and I'm here today as a rape survivor and advocate with Survivor's Justice Project, urging you to pass these items and no longer criminalize an already vulnerable population. I have been advocating for the rights of survivors for four years now, and that includes supporting this resolution. The following statistics are from a report by the National Sexual Violence Resource Center. Of youth experiencing homelessness, 61% of girls and 19% of boys report sexual abuse as the reason for leaving the home. Of those adults experiencing homelessness, 32% of women, 27% of men, and 38% of transgendered persons reported either physical or sexual victimization in the previous year. As a city that is working towards creating a safer place for survivors, that must include the population of those experiencing homelessness. I also want to talk about the narrative circulating that passing this resolution would create more sexual violence. This could not be further from the truth. It seems to me people are choosing to criminalize an entire population. If one story of rape caused us to cast out an entire population, we would criminalize CEOs, football players, professors, those living in North Austin all the way to South Austin. It is harmful to spread the false narrative that a certain population is more inclined to rape. When you vote on these resolutions, I hope your only thoughts surrounding sexual assault and homelessness is to protect survivors and not create more harm. Thank you.
The next speaker that we'll call on up here will be Mike Nakbar. Is Mike Nakbar here? Is Mike Nakbar here? Yes. You have time donated from Rachel Tepper. Is Rachel Tepper here? No? What about Christopher Stillwell? No? You'll have one minute. And when I said we had 61 speakers, that did not include donated time—I'm looking at it now—it looks like we might have with donated time somewhere over two and a half hours of time still left to go. You have, as I recall, two minutes? Or was it three? Two minutes. Two minutes, sir.
Councilmembers, mayor, thank you for staying this late. I greatly appreciate your attention to this. My name is Nicholas Sawyer. I'm a law student at the University of Texas and a member of the Public Defense Group, which represents future public defenders. As a future public defender in Travis County, I don't want to make my career out of reducing the harm that is caused by these ordinances. Already at the expulsion clinic at UT, I've seen the impact farther down the line after people have been arrested and jailed for these offenses on people's ability to get housing and their ability to secure jobs. Criminalization, like these ordinances, causes more criminalization. A study by Paul Heaton from the University of Pennsylvania on Harris County on pretrial detention and the impacts of pretrial detention showed that if someone was detained pretrial, which would happen if you were jailed for this offense, you're more likely to have more offenses brought against you within that year. So that means that criminalization, like these ordinances, drives people deeper into the system. Instead, they should be met with services. Now, I'm a UT student. I spent a lot of time on campus as a law student, and I haven't felt either afraid or concerned as a result of homeless folks coming up to me. These ordinances are unconstitutional. The panhandling ordinance is unconstitutional under the First Amendment, and there's a federal court of appeals case on that. And the sit-standing and campaign ordinances are unconstitutional under United States versus Robinson, which makes it illegal for governments to criminalize status. And so, these ordinances criminalize status. So I urge you to repeal these ordinances, or in the alternative, to accept the amendments from the Homes I Hand Cast Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nakbar, you're going to have one minute. Tessa Hawath? Is Tessa Hawath here? Yes? You'll have one minute. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike. I'm with the Democratic Socialists of America. We've knocked on thousands of doors for this issue. I've knocked on hundreds myself. We've talked to people in Districts 3, Districts 5, District 6, District 9, and this is incredibly popular. We don't knock on doors of only Democratic voters. We knock on every single door, and pretty much everyone we talk to is in favor of this. They think it's unfair that homeless people are criminalized. They understand the basic truth that, you know, giving someone a citation isn't going to help their situation, and, you know, once they get out, they're going to be homeless again. And people want to see real solutions to this, and they don't want people to be unfairly criminalized. So, you know, if there's any concern about how constituents feel, just know that this is incredibly popular. I was talking to a woman in the northwest part of District 9, and I was explaining that it would be cheaper and how there's cost saves with this, and she cut me off and said, "No, this is about basic humanity and about treating humans like humans." And, you know, I think she made a really good point.
Thank you.
So I hope we'll do what the people want and repeal these. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Lauren Ortl here? No? Go to the next name. Sue Gabriel? Lauren Ortl? Sue Gabriel? Brandy Tribble? What's your name, ma'am? What's your name?
Sue Gabriel.
Gabriel. You have time donated from Andrew McCoka? Is Andrew McCoka here? No? What about Meg Pastnik? Is Meg Pastnik here? You'll have one minute in a moment. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Councilmembers, my name is Tessa Howard, and I'm a dual-degree student at UT Austin. As a master's-level social work student, interviews I conducted in 2017 showed Austin professionals from the medical, librarian, and law enforcement professions lacked but desired training in how to interact with individuals experiencing homelessness. As a social worker, I believe we should spend our resources training and building a holistic community-based approach, not criminalizing our condition unconstitutionally, as the current ordinances do. As a law student, I am outraged by the First Amendment violations in the current ordinances, specifically targeting a population whose livelihood and safety is dependent on an ability to ask for help. I can think of no compelling government interest strong enough to warrant such wide, sweeping bans. If safety is the alleged interest, I ask whose safety? I am a UT student, and I have never felt threatened by individuals experiencing homelessness near or around campus. I would like these individuals to feel the same safety when they exercise their First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brandy Tribble. Is Brandy Tribble here? What about Kate Graziani? No? What about Enrique Ramirez Martinez? No? What about Cameron Ramos? No? What about Liam Dyer? Liam Dyer?
He's here.
He's here? Haven't come back in. And let the clerk know. Kayla Hartman?
Kayla Hartman is on my team.
Okay.
I'm Liam Dyer.
Okay. All right. Liam, why don't you come on down? You have one minute. Go ahead.
I'm Sue Gabriel from District 3. Punishing conduct that is a universal and unavoidable part of being a human violates the Eighth Amendment. Think on this before simply amending on ordinances. These ordinances are targeting people experiencing homelessness. At South by Southwest and other events centered downtown, there are many people violating these ordinances with no police harassment, no citations, and no arrests. Needlessly forcing homeless people into the criminal justice system does nothing to prevent homelessness in the future. As a matter of fact, the city should see to it that the records be asphunged for all people who have received citations and been arrested because of these ordinances. That would mean less policing.
Thank you very much. I think Mike Nakbar, 131, has already spoken. What's your name, please?
Oh, Kayla Hartman. Liam Dyer donated his time to me.
Hang on. What was your name? I'm sorry?
Kayla Hartman.
Okay. And William Dyer donated time. Is Mr. Dyer here? Okay, great. You're going to have two minutes. Is Liam Dyer here?
Yeah.
Okay. That's—
Sorry about that.
I had William—okay, so Liam Dyer is donating time to you, so you have two minutes. Is Mark McCartney here? What about Brian Register? Mr. Register? Did I? Okay, you'll be coming up. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kayla Hartman. I live in District 9, near the university. I'm also one of the proverbial social workers, and I work with folks that have serious mental illness in Travis County, throughout Travis County, many of which become homeless. And so, I have a lot of the same—I wouldn't say clients, I have the same interface as the kind of—I don't know what—they don't use caseload—as the police do. We see a lot of the same people. And I think what's really important here is that we have fundamentally different jobs. The police, no matter how kind they are to someone they're citing, or someone they see every once in a while that they sometimes, like, have to arrest or cite, it doesn't matter how kind they are. They have a fundamentally—they—their job is not to protect or serve them. That is—that's just not what they're there for. That's not what prisons are there for. And so, it's not just that the city doesn't care about homeless people, it systematically funds the abuse of homeless people. We fund trauma in the lives of those who are already traumatized, and after knocking on all these doors, I can tell you, the people don't want it. The people want affordable housing and permanent support of housing. I'm telling you as someone on the front lines, this city does not have enough beds to house people, even temporarily, even with the new shelter. It is a nightmare to help someone get back on their feet following a stay in the hospital or coming out of an abusive household. Insufficient income and lack of affordable housing are the leading causes of homelessness. We are in a housing crisis with a minimum wage of $7.25. The punishment for this moral ethical catastrophe caused by the most powerful lands on the victims of the catastrophe. Criminalizing people for a stable—lack of stable, affordable housing, a lack of shelter has been found unconstitutional in the case of Martin versus the city of Boise. It is the least humane thing you can do. This cannot continue. This must end today. Thanks.
Thank you. So as I'm looking at my list, Mike Nakbar, Speaker 131, has already had a chance to speak. 132 is Tessa Hawath, which I was not here before. Lauren Ortl was not. Sue Gabriel, 134, was not. Brandy Tribble, I called. Why don't you come on down? You had time donated from Matthew Crabiel. Is Matthew here? No? You'll have one minute. Go ahead, sir. Introduce yourself. You have a minute.
Hi, I'm Brian Register. Given that it's biologically impossible not to sleep somewhere, if sleeping outside is illegal and the purchase of some inside place to sleep is mandatory, the law is effectively outlawing homelessness or an individual mandate for the purchase of shelter in the private marketplace. When such a mandate for health insurance was put into the Affordable Care Act, a subsidy was added. Until you have offered adequate housing for everyone, it is irrational. It's not just mean, but it's irrational to demand that everyone buy it. The criminalization of homelessness does not make us safer; it encourages the very dangers that one brave young woman from UT mentioned earlier. What has happened in the past has happened despite or even because of current policing, and there's no reason to believe that the same policing will have a different effect tomorrow. Many speakers have addressed discomfort, but to outlaw homelessness is, as we've heard, lethal to the homeless. If your comfort demands my death, you had best get used to being uncomfortable, because I have no intention of dying for your feelings. The homeless love their lives just like you and I, and the law of nature, which transcends any city ordinance, gives them the right to live even at the expense of our comfort.